Hello and welcome to the Town of Litchfield Board of Selectmen Meeting. Tonight is Monday, August 25th, 2025. Let's start off by doing the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisibly with liberty and justice for all.
My name is Steve Gannon. I am the Vice Chair, sitting in for John Brunel, the Chair, who is away on a business trip this week. We just came out of paperwork review. First thing we'll go over is review and approval of consent items. We have an AP manifest for August 19th, 2025, of $70,531.63, and August 26th, 2025, of $58,611.97. We have a payroll manifest for August 21st, 2025, for $67,590.74, and August 28th, 2025, for $69,198.28. We have the treasure reconciliation for July 2025, and cash receipts policy as amended at our August 11th, 2025, meeting that we signed off on. Do we have a request for any additional items or other business? All right, hearing none, seeing none. Public input would no, will not occur no earlier than 6:45. Business. Approval for the August 11th, 2025, meeting minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review? Any comments, amendments, adjustments?
Move to accept.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, I think I have one question.
Sure.
I'm gonna dig it out, sorry, how I got it. Sorry, guys. I thought, um, if I have the printout here. Is it? I thought it was when I was doing my, at the end, roundtable. Let me go down to that. I, let me go down to that, give me one second.
Selectmen reports, you mean?
Yeah, get down to the bottom.
Yep. You have capital improvement, economic development, NRPC.
The NRPC one? I'm not sure, uh, let me just go down to that.
Dr. Queen, you mentioned that the full-
Don't read it out loud, that's part of the issue. Just give me a second. Make it down to that, there we go. Uh, when we talked about NRPC, did I say, um, the second sentence, or was that non-public? Not that it matters, it's not that urgent, but I thought I waited till non-public for that.
Well-
It's a dot that it's, it, it's out there.
No, I think it was said.
Was it said? Okay. Uh, and the only other thing I didn't understand is, on page nine, there was a vote, there was a motion. And I wanted to make sure it belonged there.
Which page?
Uh, just give me a second, I gotta find my notes, sorry, I just got here, just give me a moment. Maybe there was a motion, I think.
Information technology.
Yeah, it's right here, I have it right here.
Cash receipts.
Yep, I got it. Sorry, it was on the last page. Page eight. I just wanna make sure, under zoning board, the motion under that? Can, why did we, can somebody remind me why we voted 3-2? I just don't know if that belongs there. It was for the zoning board.
No, it was a cut.
Was it a cut?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's, I didn't know if it belonged under IT. Okay, fine, perfect. All right. Thank you, that's it, so I guess there's no changes.
Uh, motion by Selectman Larry, second by Ms. Palansky. No other changes. I'll make, uh, all those in favor, please, say, all right, please say an aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for 0-0. Approval of the non-public meeting minutes from August 11th, 2025. These have been unsealed. Any comments, modifications, amendments? Stand motion?
Move to accept.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for 0-0. Ms. Palansky making the motion, Mrs. Queen in seconded. All right, 2026. Actually, we wanna go into new volunteer policy and applications. Proposed first read. Ms. Kleiner, please.
So, this actually came up, uh, last spring, after a conversation between legal counsel and a committee. I was contacted by legal counsel and asked if we had a policy, which we did not. I was sent information from legal counsel and from Primex, our insurer. And quite frankly, it kinda got tabled, um, because we had other things that needed to be handled first. This summer, I was contacted, um, by Catherine Carrigan, who's here tonight. Catherine is a political science major at Suffolk University. She is, also has a public policy and law concentration, and is studying a minor in environmental science. So Catherine grew up here in Litchfield. She's a legal student, graduate of Campbell High School. And she was wondering if she could help her hometown and utilize some of the skills that she has learned in college. So I was very grateful, um, to have her come forward and agree to help us with this policy, using the information that have been, has been provided to us, both from our legal counsel and Primex, our insurer. So she's been working on it this summer. And she is here this evening to present it to the Board of Selectmen. This is the first time it has been read, so the Board has not seen it, other than this evening.
Thank you, Catherine. Just for the record, so everybody knows who you are, she did say, just need to name an address.
My address? Yeah, my name is Catherine Carrigan. I live at, uh, 19 First Way in Litchfield, New Hampshire. Um, thank you so much, everyone. I feel like I've got a crowd today, so, thank you all. Before I talk about the policy, I just want everyone to know, I've grown up here my whole life. I've been a very active member of this community. I, um, played softball here since I was five years old. In high school, I was in student council and basically every single club that Campbell provided. Um, and now, since I've been in college, I've been just learning a lot about public policy and getting more into local politics. And I'd like to thank, uh, our town manager, Kim Kleiner, for being a fantastic mentor throughout this process. I've learned a lot, and I'm still learning a lot. But through, I really just wanted to write this policy because I know how important our volunteers are in Litchfield. I have volunteered in multiple events, um, throughout the past however many years, and I know how crucial it is. But I also know that with that, we don't have a policy for town volunteers, and that is not okay, because, um, we just, we need a policy that shows our volunteers have rights and that they have certain responsibilities that they do need to abide by. And also for legal protection for our town. Um, in case we get audited, we need that protection. And also for liability with our insurance from Primex. We need to make sure that we're following the policies that they hold for us, as well as state regulations, as that is very important. Um, and then lastly, just for public trust as well. Um, if we are taking money into our committees, subcommittees, we need to make sure we all know where that is going and that they're going to legitimate areas in the local government here in Litchfield. Um, just to make sure we have that public trust with all of our constituents in Litchfield. So, looking at this policy, I kinda went over the purpose and scope of it. Um, but looking at the definitions, I want to make sure that I separate a town volunteer versus a short-term volunteer. So a town volunteer is somebody who provides the services without, um, receiving compensation besides like reimbursements for their own money spent for more than two events per year. So that could be, we've seen our new, um, 250th Committee coming up. So I feel like those members would be town volunteers, as they're working for a year. Um, but a short-term volunteer, on the other hand, would be somebody who offers their time only, um, like, once a year for like specific events. Let's say when we used to throw Winter Fest, like if someone's volunteering to help for that, or for a cleanup, that would be considered a short-term volunteer. So then after that, I just wrote about our rights and responsibilities for volunteers. Um, and this will be for our town volunteers, but really just for everyone, explaining that volunteers deserve to feel valued and they are to be treated equally for rights as employees, um, as they are, should be able to offer feedback, to improve their experiences, um, and to just make sure they're being well-prepared for the tasks at hand. They're also, um, given responsibilities that show that the task that they are doing and who they are working for is supposed to be considered a serious and professional commitment. So just making sure that they're dependable and fulfilling the duties that they have to do is included into this policy as well. That's the easy stuff. Uh, now, you can look into the incoming volunteers. So, this is where we really get into what our insurance, Primex, asks of us, um, and that we don't have a policy for, which is desperately needed. So any new town volunteer must fill out an application. I will show that application later. And they also must receive a background check that they must pass. This is a law from the state and from our insurance. So we need to make sure that this happens from moving forward. This will be done, like, through our city council, and will be revised by the state police according to RSA 419. But then short volunteers are not required to have a background check completed. They will have a much shorter application that I'm going to show after this policy to fill out. And again, these two applications will not take more than five minutes to fill out. They're very simple, they are not a burden to anyone. And then next, we just get into, um, coaches or youth leaders in any town organization that could be considered a town volunteer. The Recreation Committee, Commission, sorry, they will make sure that annual proof of these background checks have been performed, because that is what our insurance has asked for of us. Um, and that is very important. If you're working with children, we need to make sure that consistent background checks are being conducted. And then we go a little bit more specific into recreation volunteers. They need to make sure that the Recreation Commission is establishing a registration process, so we can oversee all the individuals who are serving as a volunteer for the Recreation Committee. And that takes us also into our subcommittees. So, subcommittees, um, can include Recreation Committee members. Um, but they must, if you are going to be a subcommittee, you must report to the full Recreation Committee for final decisions and approvals. And because of the right-to-know law for New Hampshire, RSA 91A, you must be formally recognized by the Recreation Committee, and that means that you have to have public meetings with an agenda and minutes. Or else, if you do not, you cannot be treated as a government body, according to state law. And then lastly, this policy just talks about, um, town funds. And it just explains that we are gonna be following the, um, cash receipts policy that I think you guys just approved, just passed. Just, this is, the whole purpose of this is to, um, make sure that we're being transparent between local government committees and the constituents for people volunteering. We don't want any of our volunteers to be liable for any sort of monetary issue. Um, no volunteer wants to do that, thinking that they are trying to help, and then be caught up in a mess that was not because of them. So yeah, we just want to ensure trust with all of our constituents on this policy. And at the end of the day, we need some sort of regulations on our volunteering, because without one, um, we are not using legitimate practices. So, thank you so much, I'm open for questions.
I would like to first thank you for this. I was, I started off as a member of the REC, became the Chair of the REC, moved on to the Board of Selectmen, and as the Chair of the REC, or even as a member, there was always those questions. You know, uh, what is a subcommittee, what are the responsibilities? What are our policies, background checks? So having this, this is something we were definitely lacking, and I definitely appreciate that you went through this work. I like the way it's laid out, laid out, it's pretty clear. Um, I know we're gonna have to add a budget line for the background checks, because that's something we, I don't believe we have in place.
However.
However.
I've got a however on that one.
You got a however? I appreciate the clarifications between what a town voluntary is, for a short term and long term. I know it answers a lot of questions for the subcommittees, because they would ask the same thing. And the same thing, I'm gonna pick on Janice for a minute here. Um, Janice is, uh, the, uh, Litchfield Committee, the, um, what do you?
Spirit of Litchfield.
Spirit of Litchfield. And there was always those questions about how do we collect funds? How does it get handled? And we would talk about it, but there was never any policy that could actually reference it and lean back on. So I greatly appreciate this. Something you'd like to say?
I've got a couple things, yeah.
Okay.
Again, thank you very much for coming forward with this. I'm confused why that, you're bringing that out as far as just REC. Conservation has subcommittees, the Heritage Committee has subcommittees. So it wouldn't just be REC that had subcommittees?
Yes, um, this would be for all, like, this policy is for every committee and subcommittee.
We'll change it so that we can get, remove REC from it.
From the subcommittees area, yes, yes.
From specifying that we're doing it for REC, we can probably make that adjustment.
Just all committees?
Yeah, so all subcommittees. Um, the beginning of the report, um, and as far as, um, filling out a line item for, um, for us to pay for background checks, I believe that the leagues should pay for their own background checks, of their own coaches.
Yes, so when it comes to sports organizations, yeah. Sports organizations do do that, but we still have Conservation, we still have members of Recreation.
Well, I wanna address that kinda too. Um, I understand, I mean, and we've got the first line here says, um, in accordance with the New Hampshire Division for Children, Youth, and Families, policy number 2915. That seems to me like that would stand in line with those, um, with those background checks for people that are working with children. Okay? As far as the rest of the program, I'm not sure I need a background check for somebody who's gonna be doing, you know, weed whacking in different areas, or working with, you know. I think primarily, I'm really glad to see this, because when I realized that we didn't have a policy for coaches working with children, where they would be background checked every year, I was devastated. Um, my husband was always a coach, he always had to go, um, and get a background check. It was very important, made me feel very comfortable with the coaches that were with my kids, that they had been through that process too. So that makes me really, really happy. But I'm unsure that we need to have everybody in town that volunteers, which is like a huge group of people. Um, we could have them sign waivers, um, whatever you need to do. But unless they're in touch with the very, very old or the very, very young, I'm not necessarily sure we need those background checks.
What was Primex's requirement? All committees, all volunteers have a background check?
Yes.
I'd like to dispute that with them.
Basically, anyone who isn't elected. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't apply to the Budget Committee, it wouldn't apply to the Board of Selectmen. There's a different requirement for elected officials. But they do require that if you get into a liability situation, that members that have been appointed by you.
Well, I'd kinda like to sit down with Primex and talk to him about that, because I just don't, I don't believe that we're open for liability for that. We're open for liability if we don't have these, um, volunteers, um, sign waivers, that they, if they get hurt while they're working, that, um-
I did, we, we do have waivers, sorry, I didn't show them, but-
That is important, I think everybody who's gonna work with a tool or whatever needs to sign a waiver, that if they get hurt doing it.
Yep.
Um, or trip on the way into the town hall, that they're-
That is also on the short-term volunteer application form as well. Um, at the bottom, there's a little quote from our, uh, state law that, and then you just need to sign and date it.
Let's see, what else did I have? I, I was concerned about, um, because I did spend some time reading this, because I got a couple of phone calls about it as well.
So, before we go on, so yeah, let's review if everybody needs to be, um, background checked for Children, Youth, Family Services, if they're not gonna be around it. Definitely the REC members and anybody that's gonna be around children, but I don't know about, like, Conservation.
Well, Conservation, if they're gonna be working on the fishing derby.
Okay.
And they're gonna be working with kids, then, then most likely they do. I wanna protect our oldest and our youngest, and, and I think that the rest of us, you know, can pretty much carry around.
I mean, there's, can be policies in place too, to ensure like, uh, you know, that there's never a home alone with a child, right? For, the only thing we have for children is-
Those should be in place. Yeah, those should be in place.
Yeah, but, but I mean, that's policies rather than-
Policies rather than-
And, rather than having, if we try to recruit some volunteers to help out with the fishing derby, right? They're, they're in a public area.
Those would turn into a, a short term.
Yep, yes.
Okay.
So that's the, this po, this application, which is literally a page.
Yep.
Here's the problem with if they haven't filled out the short term. If something does happen, we need to have immediately on file this document in, in order to turn it over to Primax.
Okay.
So we need an emergency contact for everybody that is, is volunteering.
Can you put a waiver at the bottom of that?
There is, right there.
It's right on it, okay, perfect.
So it's one page, literally five or, you know, 10 blanks.
That would work, right, Matt? If you're at the fishing derby and somebody's coming in to work with your boy, because we have boy goats. We have boy goats that come in.
Easy for volunteers.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the thing that-
It'll be just a long term, it said the-
The last thing that we want is to-
Make it harder.
Make it harder for people to volunteer, but again, this is a one-page document.
That one sounds okay.
Yep. So this is not difficult, really.
Uh, we have a question. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Yeah.
Open up for public discussion.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have done that. But you can, no, no, you can.
Go ahead.
They're, they're allowing me to be new and stupid, so I'm sorry about those things. Okay, thank you.
For the record, because we're on TV, state your name and your address.
My name is Dr. Christine Wilson, and I live at 20 Brenton Street. I've been in academia for over 30 years. And when I read this, as a volunteer in town, um, I have some, I would love to be on the second draft of this. There is not enough criteria here, in my mind, to, as I look at things for goals and objective criteria of how are you gonna tell this and that and the other? I didn't see some of that language, um, which I understand, because you're not coming from it from the same place I am. And you have done a wonderful first draft. You have saved the town a lot, um, and I really do appreciate that. But I think, I, I'm wondering if we need, rather than sort of pick through this, if it might be appropriate to establish a subcommittee to work on this really quickly, because it sounds like you want it in place quickly, over, before the next Selectmen's meeting, for example, to come up with a second draft that might address some of the concerns you had, some of the definitions that aren't quite crisp, um, here, and that may help. My other suggestion is, um, I already volunteer in both schools, Campbell and LMS, which I hope you realize requires me to go to, through two volunteer trainings. And so, if this is a third, I would like the Board of Selectmen to consider combining all the certifications for youth protection services in this town as one. Choose one place where you go to get it, do it once, and not have to have your volunteers repeat it, repeat it, repeat it, because it does get kind of tiring. And if I was still working, you know, full-time, there's no way that I'd be volunteering for the town, so.
Yeah, we definitely wanna eliminate redundancy as much as possible.
Schools, that's, that's the thing. Schools are separate from the town. Separate legal entities, separate insurance policies, separate everything. I mean, and I realize that's, that's one of the downfalls about a town where the school is so separate, it's actually its own legal entity. I don't think we were, certainly, if it was, and I'm gonna pick on the spirit of Litchfield too, sorry.
That's, I'm on it too.
If it was the spirit of Litchfield and REC decided to hold some sort of volunteer training, we would leave that up to the Recreation Commission to decide, because they oversee it. Um, so, other than collecting the information, we weren't looking to have a whole training session.
But it does say that in the policy. It's looking for supervisors and training programs and all kinds of things that you're turning the Chair of a, of a volunteer, um, committee into a CEO of a company. And they've already, they're volunteers as well. So what we wanna do is minimize the extra work that they have to do. They're already volunteering and spending hours and hours and hours of their time.
Yeah, I think I can-
I don't remember seeing anything about requiring-
I can adjust-
I think we're going to the subcommittees, is that where you're seeing this, under subcommittees?
This is also under rights and responsibilities, I believe.
Clear job description, outlining their roles and responsibilities. In my opinion, that would be the, um, the goal of the committee that you're, that you're on. Appropriate training may be offered to ensure that they're, must be offered, to ensure that they are well-prepared for their tasks.
That wording can be adjusted.
That has to be adjusted, I believe. Um, each volunteer may be assigned, will be assigned a supervisor responsible. The Chair of each committee is the supervisor. So we don't have to say, you can say they, you know, they report to the Chair of the Commission, if you want to, or Committee.
When it comes to, like, example, background checks in the schools, I'm sure all teachers have background checks. Is it possible, like, this lady, this doctor here as an example, I hate to have to have her get another background check or do more paperwork when they already have it. Is it possible that we talk to school, or is there a database that we could reference to find out who has already had background checks?
Or do we need, do we need, I think we need more conversation on who we're background checking.
I would be very surprised if the school would be willing to share a background check on, that would be violation, that would be a violation.
I think we can assume that she's working there, so her, her, her background check came back good. I'm hoping that that's why she's working there, um, so I guess you could assume. But I really wanna have more discussion on background checks.
This was the first read.
Yeah.
Well, and actually, I, I'll clarify, I don't work for the school, but I'm, um, a nurse practitioner. And I have a PhD from Boston College and have authored many textbooks and articles, and that's why I offered to help. But I know as a nurse, I have to go through a background check. As, you know, as teachers, they have to go through background checks. So maybe if there's a box we could check off and a reference, and, you know, or something that we claim it. I don't know if insurance would take that, or if they would make us do it, but we could ask them.
I definitely need to have a conversation with them.
Because, you know, if your employer requires a background check, uh, something like that, but-
I just don't wanna take something that I, I was so vehemently with the kids' coaches, and turn it into something that's gonna like, just tie the hands of everybody in town, that you can't work here until you do this. I, that just, to me, is just not what we're looking for. So I'd like to get a more in-depth conversation.
I think we're having-
It's growing legs.
No, I, well, yeah, yes and no, but I think if you look at the form for a background check, these are not FBI checks, these aren't-
We can talk about it, yeah.
They're very limited. You sign the form and it goes to the state or mass, you want me to bring it up?
I think that the, the last thing I attached.
Yeah.
She has it attached.
I do have a couple of questions.
Literally that.
So I don't, I don't, we'll move on, after you're done.
I think I'm done. Because I won't sign it unless you-
I just wanna make sure this works for everybody. Is, is it a one-and-done thing for short-term? Once they fill it out, so if you do a fishing derby every year, do they have to come back and do this every year?
That's what it says.
Yes. So it's every year, all right. What about if somebody, is it covered non-residents as well? I know it does for Recreation, but if we have somebody help from out of town on other committees, are we covered here? As long as they fill out the form?
They, they don't.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
So I, I pictured the short form as a short-term person, as the volunteer. Janice will have a list of them, and ask them, please just fill this out, return it to me, and then she'll turn it up to, you know, Chris is the Chair of the-
And then you keep it for record, so they don't have to fill- And then you keep it for record, so they don't have to fill it out again the following year?
Well, in the following year, they'll have to fill it out.
Oh, you're saying, yeah, okay, a new one.
Long-term, they will not.
We also have, um, tournaments that come in from out of town from rec. Those coaches are not gonna be.
No, but that's covered by the organization.
But, but their organization is required to background check them.
Their organization is, yeah.
They're renting our fields.
And then, and then the only other one is, whether if they multiple, so, so, cause we do have a lot of volunteers on different committees. They only have to fill out one form?
Yes.
It's done?
Hey, and I can answer your question. So I've coached through the town and at the club level and I have background checked at both levels, at all levels. So I've been background checked for years.
Okay, yeah.
But my, my question or my just concern is just how far down the road do we go with this?
I agree.
We're talking about subcommittees. We're talking about the vendors that come in. We're talking about guys at the Santa Claus, um, the car show in town. We're talking about the high school kids that went on the car show for the weekend.
That would be, just be a short-term clarification.
Yeah, it, it, we can, I think it can be cleaned up and redefined.
Yeah.
But the way it's written right now, there's a lot of volunteers that are looking at it and saying, I just want volunteer.
Yeah.
And, and that's not what we want.
Yeah, of course.
We have accomplished so much of volunteers in our town, and I know that you as a young person look around and see it. You know, you see cleaned up areas, you see beautiful signs and posts and, um, and people at, making events and stuff so that we all have like these wonderful experiences in our town. So then what we want is more people to get involved. And we wanna, you know, as long as we're not protecting children, you know, that.
Well, the intent is not to st- stifle that progress and, and the volunteers. But on the other hand, we don't know who these people are. We don't know what they're doing, you know.
But they are working on conditions that.
Some of them, but we don't know all that. So this is simply giving us the ability to track it. If somebody gets hurt, Primex knows that.
I have, I have no problem with that particular one, the short-term volunteer application form that has this. I have no problem.
Yeah, yeah. Even long-term, I, I think it's just when you become a member of a commission.
People fill out stuff and then they're, then they take a, a vow, they're sworn in as a volunteer, right? They go to Terry, they become sworn in, um, and they promise to work for the town and all that kinda stuff.
Only, only committee members. I mean, only, you know, commission members. Volunteers don't do that.
Before they come forward, I remember as, on conservation, they came forward and they had already filled out an application.
This would replace that.
Okay, so it's not something that we haven't done?
Correct. We do have a form. It has been lacking some of the information that Primex requires. Like, emergency contacts aren't on there. That's a big one. So this would replace that. But there is something that has been done. You're right, for committee members, yeah.
Cause I get to see.
George Lavash thirteen.
See, this is a, a hot topic.
Yeah.
George Lavash thirteen Pearson Street, Litchfield. Um, I just wanted to address a few things, um, that I saw when I was reading through this. It states initially that this is required by state law, RSA forty-one-nine. RSA forty-one-nine states that governing bodies may perform background checks where appropriate. And it specifically states employees that work with or around children, elderly persons, enter the homes of citizens or collect and manage money. Okay, so the background checks may be required by the town for employees, and they also have a, a little thing at the end that says this applies to volunteers too. So you are not required to do background checks, but you may at your discretion. Okay, so we don't have to do, uh, the background checks. And I looked up Primex's, um, volunteer, um, information sheet, and they have the same, uh, language. Local officials may require volunteers who work with children, the elderly, public funds, blah, blah, blah. So it's may required to get background checks. It's not required. Okay, so, um, I don't think we're required to do those, um, background checks. Part of this policy says that volunteers need to list their occupation and their job and, and, um, their employer, and that the town will reach out to the employer and the employer has the ability to reject the, um, volunteer from doing this. I think that's a little bit of overreach and.
Where is that?
I think he's referring to the town volunteer application form.
Oh, so it's the, on the application form?
So the application form asks for references, um, but that is also required by our Primex insurance.
And our current one has references.
For, um, for committee members.
For committee members.
For committee members, not for volunteers, right.
Well, so this, between the two, there's a long-term volunteer and there's a.
A long-term volunteer is somebody who does more than two events a year, or two events or more.
Or are on a commission or committee?
On a commission, a committee, that, it's a regular volunteer that.
But if somebody picks up sticks twice a year at the ballfields, they're a long-term volunteer, they require a background check.
Well, we've already said.
We can.
So, okay.
This is, this is the first stab. We expect changes. I definitely appreciate everything you've done.
If that's going to be changed.
But yeah.
Okay, I'm just.
The board can decide on what that.
I'm just saying that, you know, if I wanna, um, have a friend of mine volunteer at the ice fishing derby and the spring fishing derby, he now is a long-term volunteer because he did two things, and you're now gonna go to his employer and check to see if, you know, so I think that's a little bit of overreach, um, for somebody who's just gonna, I'm just, I know this is the first read, but I'm just.
I, I didn't even see that part.
Right. And I think you've already pointed this out about the supervisors. We just dug a trench at the community garden, right? And I had, uh, you know, a new committee member do that, you know. I didn't train him how to dig the trench. I wasn't appointed as supervisor, but you know what I mean? It says in here that he will be assigned a supervisor, and so we need to change.
Get you a shirt that says supervisor on the back. It's easy.
I can also, um, adjust the wording for, like, some clarification when we talk about the two events per year. I can make sure that that's like for the same, um, like for the same.
Maybe just get rid of the two events per year and, and just say that it's someone who, who does short-term events.
Yep, versus like consistent.
Yes.
Or if they're on a subcommittee. Okay, if you're on a subcommittee, you know, it's, but, I, so I'm just saying, you need a background check to do two events. I just think that's a little.
I think we're gonna work on that.
I know, but, so you can figure that out.
Big, big thing is primary focus is if you're gonna be around children or elderly.
That, to me, that makes sense. It protects our residents, which is what is our job here. Um, and I think other than that, it's just.
Digging ditches with Jay and George.
You're learning on the job.
But I'm just saying, you're in order.
And it's very unusual for conservation commission members to be assigned duties without.
The more you add to this, um, we have hardly any volunteers in town as it is. You make it harder for people to volunteer, less people are gonna volunteer. I understand protecting the kids and all that. Um, and I thought all the coaches had to go through, I mean, when I was coaching, I went through a background. So all the coaches already go through a background check as far as I know, so we are already covered there.
I, I, it was just brought to my attention that we weren't, and I just wanted to make sure that we were.
Yeah, well, we should be, but, um.
There you go. That's why we need a policy.
Need it in writing.
Do we, do we not? There's no clarification. This policy is gonna help.
Okay, so those, those are my.
I absolutely, I agree, we need a.
Definitely have, um, we have some work to do some tweaking. How, how many events does qualify where they need to be? Short-term to me is easy enough. If somebody comes to volunteer and we give them a piece of paper, say, just fill this out. So we know who you are, we know what you're doing, we know who to contact if you get hurt.
If you get hurt. That's, that's really the issue. Like, if you get hurt.
Then we already have a commission volunteer form, so this will be just amended to it. And they'll fill it out once every, whatever, three years.
I want you to just take a deep breath though, because you really have done a great job.
No, no, it's okay.
No personal attacks here.
Yeah, this is just, yeah, just.
I'm impressed. I am definitely impressed.
Yep.
Uh, Jason Brennan, twenty-three Aldrich Street, Mitch, Mr. Acting Chair. I just have a couple of quick things. I'm not gonna reiterate what, what George said, but, um, as many of you know, I have organized many volunteer activities in this community for pickup and beautification and so on and so forth. It is very difficult to find volunteers. And for pickup stick day, like we had down at Moors Falls four times, where we had twenty people each time, and we're putting in a hundred hours basically in, in a two-hour time span. If we have, uh, a sea of paperwork that they've gotta go through, the number of volunteers is going to diminish significantly. I'm concerned about the, uh, short-term versus long-term. I think that needs to be cleaned up a little bit. Because many times we're having multiple people do cleanup. We have multiple cleanups a year, and if it goes over into two, then it's, it's, it's a long-term, um, situation. So I think the bottom line is this is like a little bit of a slippery slope. This community is run on the back of volunteers. To get things done, we need volunteers. Otherwise, we're gonna put it on the back of the highway department, um, or other groups. We're gonna have to do that. And like a really good example is recently the cleanup work that we did down at Dara Pond and the, um, what we did for every single year, we go through and we spread mulch. And we just, it's kind of a last-minute type of thing. It's like, hey, on Sunday, Tim's turf is gonna dump off a pile of mulch. Can we get ten people down here for ninety minutes to shovel that mulch to make sure that we're, we're good in the playground? We're gonna have an issue with that if, if, if everybody's gonna sign up every single time. So we've gotta figure out maybe a better way. Maybe you have a form when you go down there that people sign, that you, you physically sign on the form, I release liability to the town of Litchfield.
That's something we could, I was just thinking the same.
Put it on a clipboard.
Put it on.
Read it, flip it over, sign your name, so that, the, the, the big thing, like I said, we don't wanna hinder volunteers, but we also need to know who's doing what in our, you know, just to make sure they're covered and safe is really.
And I think George made a good point. We look back here quickly. On the Primex website, they do not require a background check for volunteers. Written right on the website. I can send out the, the link as well.
We could adjust that as, as needed. So the main thing is if you're gonna be around children or elderly.
I think the intent, I think the intent is good, but I do think that, that there's a lot of over here. The regular application form, I've seen job applications that aren't that extensive. You know, and the references, I mean, we're volunteering. These people are given their time, whether it's a, a commission or, or, you know. Two hundred and fiftieth, for example, that's coming up. Are they gonna have to go through all this? We, we might, who's all our volunteers? That, that really bothers me, cause that's what this town's about.
Yeah, we may not need references. I, but that's something we could definitely work out. We'll talk to Primex, see why that's there and.
Janice Paris, nineteen Woodhawk Way. Um, I'm sort of run Spirit of Litchfield, and one of the things we have in regard to volunteers are high school students. So that's a concern. Like, they are volunteers, but there's nothing in the policy that references children under eighteen. Because I don't think we can get them to fill out without parental consent. So I don't know how you'd wanna handle that. And that is also very, um, uh, I don't know how to say it, up in the air when, you know, you get so many kids say they're gonna come. Whether they come or not.
Half is good. Three quarters is real good, yeah.
So, um, I don't know how you would handle that, because like I said, I don't think you can do it without parental consent. So, um, and the other thing that I was concerned about was also the references. I'll be honest with you, if somebody comes and volunteers and I tell them they have to give references, it's kind of insulting. To be, you know, I mean, I'm giving, you know, if I was the volunteer, I'm giving you out of the goodness of my heart, I wanna help you. And you say, well, you can't help me yet. I gotta call some people and find out, you know.
You have to help me.
So, I mean, I understand, yes, if they're gonna be, I mean, a, a lot of our events are dealing with children. So, but still, it's gonna be very difficult to get volunteers. And we also do things, you know, we have volunteers that sign up, adults, and the night of, there're either no shows or they, oh my God, I got sick, I can't come. And I have to run around and look at the crowd at, at the event and go, hmm, maybe Mary'll help, you know? And that's, you know, not enough time to have them fill a form out and, you know, cause it's last minute. So I don't know how you would handle that either.
You're, you're doing a great job. When I went to the, um, the Christmas one, there was just all these kids helping with decorations being, being done, and the little kids were just there making a huge mess, and it, it was just really cute to watch the older kids work with the younger kids.
Yeah, yeah.
You guys do a lot with very little to nothing.
Yeah, yeah. So that was, um, I think those were the two. The other things I wrote down pretty much were covered by, um, uh, everybody else, except, I, I'm sorry, I didn't actually hear, I, that statement about the employers. I don't understand why your employer would have the right to tell you you can't volunteer. I mean, I don't.
That was more just like a wording adjustment. It's, it's more of just like if any, like if we were to keep these references, which as of what Primex needs, this is what we need, but unless we talk to them and can change that. I think it's just if any major red flags came up with an employer, like do not absolutely let them help because of X, Y, and Z.
But you, you can't, you can't force someone to put their employer down. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, you know.
What happens to the employees?
None of your business where I work.
So, yeah.
If I'm volunteering, it has nothing to do with my work.
Yeah, of course.
Do these sheets get scanned back to the Primex, or do these stay here?
I don't know. I don't think there's anything that says employer.
I don't either. I don't see employer.
I didn't see it either, but.
Definitely. Do they stay here?
George read it off of one of the, the volunteer application form.
It says, please list past volunteer employment experiences or certifications. I can, we can get rid of that.
That's on the current form.
Right under incoming volunteers.
It's on the current form, now, that some, a committee member or a commission. I think, I think that's the hard part is defining between the town volunteer, long-term, you are here all the time, working on behalf of the town, and maybe it's, you know, more than two, maybe, or maybe we have to define that better. But a lot of the things on the town volunteer application form are on the form today for a long-term volunteer. So, um, and there are certainly references given on that, um.
There could be a, a situation where, um, I worked for Comcast before it was Comcast. It was Harry and Cable. I used to get points towards my reviews and stuff for working, volunteer work in the community. So, I mean, there's something, if we wanted to provide somebody with that, that they could take back to their jobs.
That would be a pull. Um, Kim has a good question. Where is this data being stored? Is this only being stored here local, or are we giving it to Primex?
No, this is only stored, and we will create a set of files for volunteers that's locked up in the vault with our person, you know, with our personnel files, so that this information cannot be disseminated or public in any way. You know, it, this isn't, this is a volunteer application form. It's not, um, discoverable under RSA ninety-one A. Just.
Okay. Um, we also are talking about storing paperwork. We're talking about having to put that someplace and keep that someplace.
Would it be, is it possible?
Oh, I'm sorry, Diane. That's, that's a.
Would it be possible to do something similar to what we did with the, um, event policy? To have a few people in the town that deal with volunteers, like myself, all the time, be part of putting this together?
I personally believe, I, I don't think we need a whole committee to do it. If some, we're taking a lot of notes. We're getting a lot of input. I think we should be able to take a run with that, make some modifications, and then come back for another, another read.
And if you have more specific changes, perhaps you could send them to Ms. Kleiner and she could, and she could share.
Get your input.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could you do that?
In all our notes, format back there is writing down all he can. He's taking notes heavily.
If I'm not gonna be involved in a second draft, I would suggest, your biggest, the biggest thing is the criteria. If I'm not gonna be involved in a second draft, I would suggest, your biggest, the biggest thing is the criteria. In saying short-term versus long-term, I would think in terms of hours. If you have a volunteer who's gonna work 50 hours, you know, very few people are gonna work, you know, 50 hours, I'm thinking of six.
If you could just, you, you have a wealth of knowledge that I really do want her to have access to. But rather than you having to come and meet with her and everything, if you could just send that to Kim, Kim would send it, get it to her.
How long do we have you?
We want your input.
Friday, but I'm here, I'm here, I'm here virtually, every, whenever, so.
Okay, so all of that can come to Kim and Kim will get all of that to you.
Yeah.
And then we'll come up with the second draft?
Yes, absolutely.
I definitely appreciate you offering up your time and we'll definitely take you through this. Is there anyone else who would like to ask a question? Oh, boy.
Sorry.
Okay, let's try to keep this a little short.
Yeah, yeah.
It's important. Might as well get it all out right now. Yeah, but we might as well get it all out right now. You're so lucky you didn't like get close to like 50 more hours in it and then, and then all of a sudden presented. So it's good to be early.
Yeah.
But you're easy with this.
I get it.
I'm Chris Burns for Center Street. I'm also the head chair of the Recreation Commission. Thank you for your work you've done on this.
Thank you.
As the head chair of the Recreation Commission and a past coach in town, also a parent in town, I appreciate all of it. You know, I think there's been a lot of good points that have been made here from the guys on the Conservation Commission, Janice, you know, what Bob said about the volunteers in this town. I think that's, that's definitely the most true statement, that, you know, this town runs on volunteers. And, you know, if we're gonna bog everybody down with paperwork and extra steps, you know, I'd hate to see that, you know, go by the wayside and just have people not stepping up. So a couple of questions I have, probably more rec-specific or from the subcommittee side. You know, this is something we've been talking about as far as the coaches and the leagues in town. Currently, they are on their own to go and get their background checks. They're required to do that by their leagues. We're talking about putting, just something as simple as putting a little checkbox on our facility and field requests. So anytime a league requests the fields, you know, they gotta check off that their coaches have been background checked and everything. So I guess, number one, would that be sufficient from, from that end? Or are you looking for us to take on...
Some other coaches coming out of town?
No, I'm talking about the town, town leagues.
So you'd say, we don't really, we don't have little league anymore.
Anybody requesting our fields. So, yeah, if it is a club town, a club team coming in, they'd have to check off that box.
That's, that's different because they're renting the property.
They'd still have to check off the box because they have to fill out the same form.
And they're still Litchfield Little League, they're still...
Not necessarily.
Litchfield.
Not necessarily.
No, like Plax or what have you, yeah.
Yeah, not necessarily.
I think a checkbox would be sufficient and then hang on to the paperwork so if we get questions.
Let me see, so the...
That actually, well, that, because it's gonna be on the application and eventually you're gonna send a payment in. And then Kim and Karen and I...
Well, for the out-of-town people, yeah.
They'll be able to retain that.
So would you, Chris, would you meet with the head of each of those leagues to tell them that we require it?
We don't necessarily meet with everybody.
But could you?
They fill out the form and we request that they come in to talk about it when...
But, no, but we have leagues that are run that have boards and everything. Is it possible for you to get your head of your, those boards in to say?
Talking about for the town leagues?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so right now the Recreation Commission has a dedicated, is on for each league. So there's somebody on the Recreation Commission that communicates with each league or subcommittee.
You could say to them that this is what Litchfield requires in order for you to be able to rent our fields, is that they have to be background checked.
Renting the field if it's a town.
To use our fields.
Reserve, yeah.
Reserve our fields, use our fields.
Yeah.
It'll be a checkbox and if they don't check it off, that could be a no.
But you could meet with them too.
Okay.
To, to go over the policy to make sure that each town league, whatever it is, soccer.
So there's town leagues and then now the, there's outside town leagues that...
That come in for tournaments.
Right, and that's what he's referencing. They, they're gonna add a checkbox to their application and...
No, for everyone.
Anybody who's renting, renting, it's, it's...
Anybody using the field, anybody filling out the form has to check off the box in order for it to be considered.
It's something new they've been doing about a year.
Okay. But the town teams?
Teams will be required as well because they'll be around children.
But are they, are they gonna be, are you gonna discuss it with them that is, that is required by us if they do that?
We can. It's on, if it's on the, if it's on the form and they gotta check it off, they see it and they read it. But, yeah, it's something we can certainly discuss with them.
I would, you know, just bring it out there and just make sure that it's happening on all the town.
So the other question I have to that end is just like I was talking about the rabbit hole earlier. You know, we're talking about head coaches, assisting coaches, but what happens if a coach can't make it to practice and the dad has to step in off of the sideline? Or a mom has to step in off the sideline to run the practice?
Happened all the time.
You know, I mean, it, it could pose an issue.
And concession stand workers.
Concession stand workers, yep, definitely. You know, one, one suggestion I think I would make, the long-term versus short-term concession is, you know, your long-term people could be your, your committee members, your, your chairs, your subcommittee members. And then short-term is anybody that's not affiliated directly with the committee, but shows up to do the, to do the volunteer. So that they're not necessarily falling into that long-term field. Rather than putting a quantity on it, you know, they could show up once or twice or four, five times.
I think it's important before we leave here that we understand, because this is an issue that has been addressed a few times by legal. The rec commission can have volunteers, long-term volunteers, short-term volunteers. When you use the word subcommittee, now you're creating a governmental entity. And they are subject to all the laws with 91A.
Well, I'm referring mostly to the Spirit of Litchfield.
And that's what, so does the Spirit of Litchfield post an agenda? Do they, do they take meetings that are posted on the, on the town's website? I think we get rid of that word.
Okay.
Be careful with that word.
Subcommittee?
Subcommittee.
So what do we call them?
Means you've created an entity under Recreation Commission that is subject to all the rules that we all are. And, and I don't want that to backfire on us. They can certainly be your long-term volunteers and they can plan events on behalf of the rec commission. And they can be under the town insurance, all no issue, all no issue. They are wonderful. But I don't wanna put one word on them that opens us up to something that we didn't intend.
Drop that title.
Yeah, they're your volun, they are yours.
So they're not, so they're not the Spirit of Litchfield anymore?
No, they could be the Spirit of Litchfield, they're just long-term volunteers to the rec.
They're long-term volunteers to the rec commission.
That's what they were.
But we, we keep using this word subcommittee.
Okay.
Yeah, don't, don't...
Long-term volunteers.
Because, yeah, I just don't want them to get stuck.
Fair enough, fair enough.
And so, to the point with like the 250th, we've said they are a subcommittee of heritage. Okay, they're not? I thought that's what...
That was my understanding, it was gonna be a subcommittee because it's gonna be used town fronts.
Okay, all right.
I think I'm, I think I'm done.
He's got a good point.
Hello? Let's quiet down so we can get back on to...
But you, you've stated in the past that Spirit of Litchfield is a subcommittee.
It was called a subcommittee.
We're gonna change our terminology.
Yeah, because they collect money. So does that open a whole new can of worms?
Rec commission collects money. Rec commission collects money.
They're long-term volunteers on the rec commission. They're no longer a subcommittee, they're not a subcommittee.
Rec commission makes all the decisions. Rec commission approves everything, rec commission collects the money.
Marion Colby, 318 Charles Bancroft Highway.
Hello.
I'm the chairman of the Heritage Commission. I have a couple of questions and a couple of concerns about this. We were charged by this, this board to work on a committee for the 250th celebration for the town. Once that committee is formed, I mean, we called for volunteers, et cetera, to come to the meetings. Once that committee's formed, they will have their own, they will have their own committee. They will have their own chairman, they will have their own secretary and their own treasurer. And Heritage Commission is not in charge of them. The Heritage Commission and the Litchfield Historical Society will be working together, but, but that committee will have their own autonomy.
Are they a subcommittee of you?
Of us?
Yeah.
That's something we'll have to discuss. My, my interpretation, my understanding is it was gonna be a subcommittee of the heritage.
I never was told it was gonna be a subcommittee. Because I, I was told that, you know, once they...
When I was on the heritage last year, I said it was going.
I don't remember ever using that term, but once we had, once they have a, a person to be in charge of it, then, then that per... I guess they will report to, to me.
Heritage, yeah.
Heritage, to, to report to the town if there's concerns. But let me get to my concerns here. The, I have a couple of questions about the definition. So when you say someone who provides a service to a charitable organization or a town or a government entity, what do you mean by charitable organization?
That is, that is our definition from Primex, sorry.
But a charitable organization could be the veterans' organization, the Lions Club, the Historical Society. They have nothing to do with town government. So can town government be... Well, I know, but it says if they, if we have volunteers, like as a historical society, then our charitable organization, we're gonna have to have our volunteers fill out forms and do background checks?
No, this is only related to the town.
Well, why does it say, I know, but it says here charitable organization.
We are not a charitable organization.
This is only related to the town.
Okay, well, I don't know what a charitable organization in the town is, that's what I'm asking. What does it mean when it says charitable organization or government entity? What do you, what is the charitable organization that you're talking about?
Subcommittee will be a government entity, a charitable, charitable would be the veterans.
But they're not...
But they're not part of the town.
They're not part of the town.
I think it's, it's just a definition of a volunteer. A volunteer generally volunteers for two different entities.
I know, but I'm saying you have to, you have to define what charitable organization is.
Want to use my pink pen?
I'm playing this all back.
That was one, the other one is under rights and...
I wanna be in town government.
Come on, let's go back, one conversation, please.
Under rights and responsibilities. It says each volunteer will be provided with a clear job description outlining their roles and responsibilities and appropriate training will be offered. So who do you think is going to be writing job descriptions for the volunteers and who is gonna hold training classes?
Um, we, we kinda touched on the training, correct? And the idea of the job description is just more for like the protection of the volunteers? In case something happens and they're not like comfortable with what they did? Like, we just need to make sure that we're covered to make sure that whoever they're volunteering for has accurately told them what they need to be doing and what their role is.
You're not expecting written job description?
No, this is just...
She's gonna change your verbiage on that too.
Okay, now, I just wanna on record that as a member of the Heritage, I mean, the chairman of the Heritage Commission and a member of the 250th Committee. I want to just go on record that I think this is gonna have a very deleterious impact on our recruiting volunteers for this event. We wanted to have a big event that would encompass everybody in the town and try to have something for families and something for history-wise and something, you know, family fun or events. And I, we're having trouble, I mean, we already, we had a meeting, our second meeting, and it, we had 15 people. We need to have more people volunteering, so I'm just afraid. I just want that on record. I know that this has nothing to do with you writing this policy, but I want it on record with the board that I think it's gonna be a problem. And it might impact what we end up doing for the 250th.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
And I'm worried about that too, because I know how hard you're all working on this. Is it possible just to have the volunteer application filled out by the, remember when we talked about a secretary, a treasurer, those people?
Yeah, the officers or whatever you wanna call them, yeah.
And then the rest of them just have that short-term on the table at a meeting and have them fill out that short-term? So we've got emergency contacts and that.
All right, that, that's all, I just think that needs to be clarified though, that's all.
I think that would be...
I mean, we're here for the first reading and I know you want, I don't wanna come to a second reading and if I didn't put my input in, then nothing's gonna, you know, then the things won't be adjusted to, to fit everybody's, you know, what everybody wants.
I think that this will all be a little bit more clarified once we change town volunteer versus short-term volunteer? And what it means to be a short-term volunteer, especially for the 250th.
Okay, great, thank you.
If you look up here, this is a short-term volunteer. It's, it's pretty quick to the point, it's who you, who are you, what's your phone cell?
Yeah, I see that now, yeah.
And that, and that's it.
I didn't have a copy of that, so I wasn't aware of what was gonna be required.
Thank you.
And it'll actually make your life a little bit easier because you'll be able to put in, you know, who the person is, the cellphone, the contact information.
Good job.
Thank you.
Age before beauty, but you'd lose out twice.
Good evening, Robert and Kim and Steve and Diane and Kim and Karen. I hope you don't mind me using your first names, I think I can, I've been here forever. I think I heard you say, Kim, that the school is a separate situation from this policy. This is my question, since we're not going to have another formal meeting to review this. At our last meeting, we talked about doing what we did at the 275th celebration and having student reenactors. We also talked about approaching, and I was about to approach the high school, so I really do need some clarification. We talked about approaching the high school and asking if any of the students would like to make being involved in a year-long project to celebrate our country's 250th anniversary as a sophomore project? Or are there students that would like to do a shorter-term project but be involved? So how do we approach the school if they are separate?
Well, then they'll be part of, what do they, what's that in high school, your...
Yeah, they're under... They wouldn't have to be the volunteer because they were at the age of 18, so I was in age 20.
They couldn't sign, they couldn't sign anything. They, they...
They'll do it as their project, as a school project.
So they could do a sophomore project, no problem.
If approved, if approved by the school.
Of course.
Yeah, the school will be tracking it, so we'll know, we'll know that, or you'll know, whoever's running will know that they're coming over as the school volunteer or the school, as part of the school project.
Great, great, thank you.
Same thing goes for Janice and, you know, if they're doing it part of the school project, the rec and Janice has already talked to the council of the school, so it's, they're covered there.
I think you can appreciate how important it is to have the students involved in our 250th celebration of our country's birthday.
Yeah, it's great.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Justin, come on, have a seat.
Just real, uh, quick, Justin Brunel, 21 Bear Run Drive. I just wanted clarity on the league piece. So from, we went back and forth on coaches, there's no coaches associated with rec commission. There's also no leagues really, so we don't run leagues, leagues run leagues. So to just piggyback on what Chris was saying, our initial thought was just a checkbox saying, hey, you, you background check your coaches. Is that gonna fly? Or do you want confirmation that X number of coaches, excuse me, in baseball and in basketball and in flag football have been background checked? And do we wanna have that information as a town? Each league has their own insurance, right?
Correct. So that's the, that's the important part. These entities do, are, do, are not affiliated with the town, they're not under our insurance, they're not... They, they are using the field, but they have their own board of directors, they have their own policies, they have their own... I think the checkbox is important, but liability-wise, we're not concerned about those. If the rec commission had a basketball league out of town.
Sure.
And, and they had a local resident that was there working with the kids or several. But they're not under another organization, we need to background check those people.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. So in, in reading the policy, it just, it probably just needs to be taken into consideration that none of the leagues actually reported to rec, so as you're looking at it.
But ethically, they are part of our town.
Correct.
And, and we do wanna protect our kids.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, but they're, they're also, they have a separate organization that manages and runs and has insurance. And they, the orgs, the sports orgs have a chair and a vice chair or president or a secretary and they have insurance. So they basically are coming to the rec asking for time on the fields.
Correct.
That's, the rec is managing the fields, the organization is managing their people.
Correct.
And I think that checkbox gives you, you know, some comfort-
Yeah, no, hundred percent.
In the fact that they are saying to you, they have done this, they have, you know, background checked all these people, so that is their responsibility by law.
Hundred percent, so that's why I just wanna make sure it suffices this board's concerns and the policy's concerns, yes.
She's still sitting here smiling.
I know, right?
Keep them coming.
You've got the composure necessary to do your job, I think.
Anyone else that would like to comment on the, dad, dad doesn't wanna step up?
Dad does, but dad promised you he would.
Can I just ask, um, there were some of us who, who really switched schedules around quickly when this came out, 'cause we were surprised. And I know a lot of people who wanted to come but couldn't make switches, et cetera, and some other people involved in some of the teams and stuff who were really concerned about it. So, um, I'm just wondering if, how many drafts there are gonna be and if it's really gonna-
I, I have that written down, um, we should probably have a, a second public meeting, um, pass out the draft to the committees so they can also take another peek and then come back. I mean, this is, we don't have to rush this, we wanna make sure it's done correctly, but we also wanna make sure that we do it quick enough where everybody's protected.
If they'd like to send me an email, the list of email addresses, then we can give it to Catherine and when she has another draft and is ready, we can email it to you.
If you'd like to take Catherine out to lunch and have a conversation, I'm sure-
Breakfast is nice.
I like breakfast, yeah.
Her dad's gonna do a background check, though.
All right, is there anyone else?
Any comments from the board, you've done good work, we'll get it, right?
Anything else you'd like to say?
Not really. I'll, I'll like, I'll re-watch all of this and take everything into consideration and like, any written feedback, I'll take and edit.
I, I like, I think you did an awesome job and appreciate what you have done.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, yeah.
All right. Where do we go from there?
Oh, were we in a meeting?
Budget reviews, that sounds like fun.
Yeah, there we go.
Get everybody run.
A chance to run everybody who's going with the budget reviews.
And, and they're off. She handled it really well, you know what, she thought her nerf fee, she was very composed.
She did, she was a pro. Yeah, she was very good.
It's great, it's actual, real-life experience.
We can send an item and we approve the last one, what was the second one?
There were two in there, I think.
I don't see it on the-
It was really good.
All right, uh, moving along.
Who you got next?
Oh, this is the July Treasurer.
Okay, so we don't have any?
All right.
Budget?
We might get out of here.
I don't know, we were gonna get out of here, Joan said, promised me that tonight was gonna be a really good night.
Yeah, but the first one's so easy.
All right. My night is, uh, Parks and Recs.
Thirty seconds.
Forty-five, twenty dot ten.
What is it?
Oh, do you wanna do public input first?
Say that again, what is it?
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry, yeah, correct. Um, we'll open it up to public input, um, at seven forty-four. Anybody here for a public input that is not on the agenda? Guys are on the agenda, all right. We'll close public input at seven forty-four.
Now we're going to rec.
Where's Park and Rec?
All right, come on up, Chris, sorry. Parks and Recs.
Musical chairs.
Forty-five, twenty dot ten.
Towards the end, Diane.
It's, uh, after vendor payment.
Thank you, Chris Burns, again, head chair of the Recreation Commission for Center Street. So we've submitted our, our budget for next year and, um, I think the biggest part of our increase here is our field maintenance contract, uh, the, the contract is, is up at the end of this year, so we're actively, uh, writing the RFP for, uh, to solicit new, new bids for that.
This is contract at end of January, right, I mean, end of December?
December, correct. So we're, uh, we, we know we've, we've, we've had a pretty good deal over the last couple of years, um, and he's done a fantastic job, so we're anticipating a, a fairly hefty jump, uh, you know, to that end. You know, some of the, some of the other items that we, uh, anticipate a little bit of a jump in, um, you know, obviously the, the electricity, the, the portables, the trash, you know, the, the things that seem to just get more and more expensive each year.
Let's see, kinda jumps, I would look at that.
Uh, we will take a responsibility for the custodian, that was not negotiated by Parks and Rec, that was negotiated here, so sorry about that.
Yep, yep.
Okay, no worries.
Let's take that off your shoulders.
Thank you.
It's growing differently, isn't it?
For the maintenance, Chris, is, is, is that number a dead number, or s- It is not, it's an anticipated number.
Anticipated number, because-
Yeah, so I think we've looked at a few, uh, surrounding towns, uh, comparable, uh, to the size and, and number of locations and services. The reason I ask is because you, you obviously got that e- email or whatever last week. Yep. Um, have we had any further conversations with, with him? I, I reached out, I haven't, I haven't personally spoken with him, but I know a few members have and it sounds like, um, sounds like at least fulfilling the contract is, is- Yeah, he's gonna fulfill his contract, but whether or not he goes forward, because- Whether or not he's gonna continue. Been on it, that I don't know.
Last week's meeting, decided to call him up.
That I don't know. So we might be looking for someone else and maybe extensively more. Right.
How about, years ago, we split the contract up, remember where it was manicured and non-manicured, is, that's still part of the-
It's still part of what we're looking to do, yeah.
So, people, I shouldn't say people, companies can bid on one, the other, or both. Yeah, he has been giving us a good deal, the fields look great, anticipating a jump.
We've also, we've also had a conversation about taking those, uh, non-manicured sites and, and having it be tackled by volunteers. The policy, the, the new form will, uh, come into play.
Yeah. But I think when we originally wrote that quote, I think we only thought it was like worth ten or twelve thousand dollars, so it would definitely help.
That was three years ago, yeah.
Yeah, today's day and age, we know it's a lawsuit. Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Burns?
I know in the past, there's been some concern about the building repairs and maintenance line, and so you see it going back down. But REC as, and our other, um, boards and committees are all doing now assessments of their properties. And so our hope is to put together a comprehensive list of all the things, safety-wise and other, that need to be done to these properties so that we can bring that forward, um, to the Board of Selectmen and we can look at that as a more comprehensive, 'cause I think that it's not really just REC, that-
Yeah.
We need it here, a number of our town buildings need it, and, um, so we can look and if certainly if you get put in a spot, um, that you need some work, 'cause I know you've lowered that line, we can always look at the government building line, um, and I think that, we used to do that, Steve, and, and go back and forth.
That's helpful, thank you.
Somebody, the thought process on their dropping is because there's the-
Expendable trust.
Expendable trust, but what I would caution on is try not to-
Not a guarantee, and we realize that, we are tackling a few of the larger projects this year, um, specifically Talon Hall with the, the repairs and the refinishing there.
Because then we also, we don't know how old the roof is, you know, that's, so it's one of those things that I wouldn't, I would avoid using it as a yearly budget, because obviously the Budget Committee would watch, too, and they'll say, hey, wait a minute here. But if you think you can get away with forty-five hundred, everything's going good with the old girl, with the old, old building so far?
Hey, we're waiting to, we're waiting to bring somebody in to inspect the heating unit, but we'll see.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Burns?
When are the floors gonna be done?
I don't have a hard date on that, but they were waiting for the, the repairs to happen underneath the floor with the beam that was rotted, that happened this past week, so, um, so I'm gonna reach out to that contractor and pick what I think I recently-
It's great that we're able to work together, so.
Yeah, so, so we're just waiting on his schedule.
I think then we'll give the Budget Committee a little sticker shock at first.
We're anticipating that, too.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mosquito District, forty-four eleven twenty.
So I have come to you with a number of mosquito updates at your last meeting. Um, I have to tell you, they are doing, um, very good. They had a three percent increase last year and I kind of loved that. Um, I, they are not anticipating another increase, um, for twenty, uh, twenty-six, so it's a straight twenty-nine, three fifty-five. I have to say, um, they have been doing a great job, especially a great job letting us know, um, all of the data, all of the inspections, how everything's going. They're very attentive to, to ledge field, so, and our numbers have been good.
Three percent is not bad. General governmental facilities, forty-one ninety-four ten.
So this is, I don't know where my, uh-
Yeah, I'm like, oh my gosh.
I know, okay. So, um, you know, we did hire, um, a couple of years ago, um, we brought in a custodian, um, that has been working out well. It's between here and, um, Talon Hall, um, you know, most of the work that you've seen done to the floors and the restoration, that, that's him. Um, and he's very talented with, especially municipal buildings, um, but we're not expecting an increase other than, um, it's the same as twenty-twenty-five proposed. Obviously, we had a little delta with the, receiving the default. Other than that, there's not a whole lot of change from what we proposed in twenty-twenty-five. Um, I did wanna bring you down, um, building maintenance and repair is, is up a little because of JP's past services. Um, but obviously that's something that we wanna make sure, um, that we continue, it's just not increasing that contract. Um, and then there's another line, um, down tw- line twenty-eight. So you'll see twelve hundred dollars, um, for a new fire alarm monitoring fees. Um, that is a fee that we are being assessed by the town of Hudson, um, all of their people are being assessed it. We thank Hudson for working with us and the school. They implemented it by warrant article and could've charged us for twenty-twenty-five and they did not, um, knowing that we didn't have a chance to include it in our budget. Um, so they will begin it in twenty-twenty-six. So you'll see that included in our budget as long, as well as the school for their buildings.
So that's twenty-four hour coverage for all eight town buildings.
That is the monitoring fee, it's just, yeah, it's a yearly fee for them to monitor, yeah. It's a hundred and fifty for each building. And then gasoline. So, I mean, this is an area where we struggle, because we feel that we set it according to what the town needs, right? So regular fuel, whether you're talking the fire, whether you're talking police, highway, these are our regular fuel, um, line items. We track it, we know how much each group has used, we look at, out to the, um, governmental forecast for what they expect it to be for next year, and, and we get cut, the Budget Committee, every year.
But you're already less, you're putting in for less this year than-
Well, the, that sixty is the default, um, so the default-
What's fifty-seven?
The fifty-sevens were-
That's for next year, so you're proposing-
But, the Budget Committee only gave us fifty-one.
But we've already gonna use more than that, right?
That's why I hate that we don't have what our current usage is in here.
I can certainly get you that.
Yeah, no, don't, no, it's just, I, it would be nice to have a column that says what we spent in that general ledger account.
Yeah, so-
That's all right, maybe next year, maybe next year.
Next year, next year.
Sure.
Next year.
I know, it's, it's, um, you know, that's-
It changes every week, so it's-
It does, but it would be nice to be able to go to them and say, listen, we put in for, um, sixty, you gave us fifty-one, we're lucky enough to have more in the default, but we've already used this much and, and we're already this far in, you know?
You know, I think that with that default-
Budgets?
Um, it was a higher price per gallon then, so that wa- is why it was a little higher. But if we go in with fifty-seven, we need fifty-seven.
And that's where that number, what you've already used-
That's our average run rate, it's about eighteen thousand gallons per year.
Yeah. Correct, yeah. And we do, we do track it, so we can tell you at any given time.
You've got all that, you've got it, okay.
Um, the same thing, I mean, with the, with the diesel that has been down, um, our usage has, has been down, it's not the three ninety it was in the default. Um, so we've estimated that accordingly. Um, custodial maintenance supplies, I mean, we, and the furniture and fixtures. Um, one of the reasons why we budgeted more in twenty-twenty-five was because some of these things need to be replaced.
We need to replace all these chairs.
I'm so afraid that someone's gonna, you know, lose a chair, um, we've taken them out as we found them, but we do need some chairs.
And that line item, that also got pulled from the REC, right? Do they, or does the custodian charge separately in the REC or is all the-
He does, yeah.
He does, okay, okay.
He does. And then the last line, yippee, um, is, uh, it's down, 'cause it's paid off, yay, a hundred and fifty thousand and we're still ninety thousand over the cap.
A hundred and fifty-eight ninety. So governmental buildings, we're looking at one thirty-eight, seven, twelve, down from a hundred and fifty-one, one twenty-four.
Down a hundred and fifty-one thousand, yeah.
Yeah.
A hundred and fifty of it being that vacation tower, but we'll take it.
Down eleven, yep.
We're at forty thousand, nine forty-two for gas.
Forty thousand?
Forty-two.
That's a good number to have when you go into budgets, to say we've already needed this, with fluctuating gas prices. I mean, your reports will be even more-
Where are we at, Karen, on that?
Um, we've already spent forty thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars on gasoline this year.
And we haven't started calling yet.
As of last budget, as of last Friday's budget. Okay.
We still have.
So we spent seven thousand this year.
Former months, yeah. Former months, yeah.
Yeah, we have nineteen thousand gas in the-
About eighteen, four, yeah.
Don't we burn more gas in the cold than you're doing though?
Um, well, highway, the mo- a lot of, they'll burn diesel.
Yeah.
Um, all right, depends on fi- on police.
It's gonna be a big number to come up with for them, that you, you're gonna have to just be ready with, with everything.
I know, we did just fill it, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I hope we don't have an early winter.
You know, the farmer's almanac's saying it's gonna be a really tough winter, and I'm, I'm hoping it's wrong.
All right, code enforcement, forty-two, forty-one dot twenty.
What do you, say it again?
Forty-two, forty-one, about twenty, eight.
Playing bingo.
And so, um, we did go over this with Matt and, um, who couldn't be here tonight. Um, so there's not much change to this budget, um, at all. It's pretty consistent, it is down, um, from the, I'm sorry, it's up from- It's pretty consistent. It is down from the, I'm sorry, it's up from the twenty-twenty-five. Twenty-twenty-five was lower than the twenty-twenty-four, which is salary adjustments for personnel.
Questions? Okay, moving on. Health Department, forty-four, eleven dot ten.
Just one year, I'd like to see us put these in numerical order.
Right, right, oh my god, yes.
We can do that for you, so.
Thank you.
It's like a game, it's like a game of pong.
Okay. So, again, this is your health officer right now that is Captain Kelly. We are working towards, you know, getting our building inspector. And so he'll have some training to do later on, once he's finished his building inspector training. But that stipend right now is for our deputy who is filling in in the role, so no changes there.
Consistent with twenty-twenty-five.
So he'll take this over once he gets his certification in health?
Yes, yes, we wanted him to finish his building inspector trainings first.
Is he doing with that, is he doing all right?
He's doing very well, yes. We're very happy. He's very knowledgeable.
All right, Fire Administration, forty-two, twenty dot ten. You guys gonna join us, you're gonna sit back there?
We'll sit back here.
Can I come sit back there, too?
Sure. Anybody have popcorn?
Fire, what?
The number you said?
Fire Administration, forty-two, twenty dot ten. Go left, go left.
I'm afraid to look all the way over here.
Would you like yours?
What's that?
Would you like your slide?
Sure, that'd be fine.
I can do that.
The challenge, so I'll apologize to the board and to the folks here. I just came from the eye doctors, out in Attic, that's why I was late, but at the same time, I'm having a little trouble seeing the screen because of all the drops they put in my eyes, so the slides would be very helpful. What we prepared was.
Some slides for you.
What we had done last year and the previous year, the chief and I just put together. The, anything that was net neutral, we left off, you know, it's a zero up or down. Anything that was a down is a cost offset there, and anything that's up is listed in the slides. So we can just go over those, if that's okay. Work for you, chief?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, the, if you look at the budget on the whole, the total increase from the twenty-twenty-five proposed budget is just over three percent. It's twenty-five thousand, twenty-one dollars over the twenty-twenty-five proposed. And the categories that went up are listed, we can go over them. Fire chief salary goes up by thirteen hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Full-time wages go up by fifty-six, forty-three. Call wages go up by seventy-eight, fifty-seven. Our training goes up by five hundred dollars. The inspector also goes up two hundred and fifty-two dollars. Full-time overtime represents six hundred and twenty-nine dollars up, and full-time training overtime is five hundred and eighty-two. And most of those are reflected just because of the increases, merit increases and so forth across the board. There's no cost offset on the wages side, nothing, nothing went down there. But if there's no questions with this stuff, that's a total wage increase of sixteen, eight, oh, one of the twenty-five thousand total. If we look at the next slide.
Do you have the weekend coverage in there?
Yes, sir.
That's a call.
That's the call, right?
Right, that's what.
For the weekend coverage, they voted, okay.
You take that, hit the share.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So in the main, what we call the main budget, which is outside of just the salaries, there's an eight thousand dollar increase. And if you look down, you've got the insurance, long-term disability goes up just slightly. Software contracts goes up slightly, very, very marginal increases. Dispatch, our contract reflects a change in the amount we pay per call this year, and that's what that reflects. That's consistent with our, our contract with Hudson and their incremental increases over the years. Electricity slightly up. Protective gear is up, so protective gear, you know, the PPE that we wear to go into structure fires, the cost of all of that's gone up pretty significantly over the last year. So we expect that next year in replacing gear, it's gonna cost us about six thousand dollars more than we've paid in past years, simply based on the increases. Those costs are just passed on to us.
And the, and the reason for the increases with the PFAs that we're all facing right now with our water, a lot of the gear, the water resistance, that's what was in the gear. They've transitioned away from that and have a different process for doing it, and that's what the price increases in the gear.
So with that, medical supplies, there's a, there's a slight increase there just based on the number of calls that we're doing and the supplies we're using every year. That goes up by five percent. That's pretty consistent with what we've done in past years. And then the eight-eleven, which is training and seminars, we're proposing goes up by five hundred dollars just because the cost of the, excuse me, the training and the seminars has, has gone up as well. Cost offsets are down below. These are, these are items that go down. So that's, that helps offset the cost. So in the main budget, your total increase was just over ten thousand dollars. That's offset by the almost eighteen hundred dollars here in employee screenings, in water, in dues and subscriptions, and in fire department equipment leases, which I think was the printer that we have, printer-copier at the station. And those costs aren't part of our budget, excuse me, anymore. So that ends up with a main increase. If you take the ten thousand less the offsets, it's eight thousand. So when you add the two, two together, if you go back to the first slide just up top, it's a total increase of three point one percent of twenty-five thousand dollars over the twenty-twenty-five, excuse me, proposed.
So the call is salaries, but it is weekend coverage?
It includes weekend coverage.
So why has it gone up by that much? By almost eight hundred? Is that, it's all salaries?
The, so then, there's, the salary increases for the force first, but not the most important one. There's an increase in the volume of calls. So we've seen, yeah, we've seen a consistent increase in the calls, between fifty and a hundred calls every year. And this is just planning for that. I did, you can, if you, I don't know if that's the next one for us, but it's the same, basically the emergency management budget.
Go for it, it's down a little lower, but.
Okay.
Save us from scrolling back and forth.
Yeah, sorry, it's the same as, same as twenty-twenty-five. There's no, no, no proposed increases for the emergency management operational budget. So.
Why, it's a significant jump from. Twenty-sixth Department, twenty-five versus proposed increase of one thirty-seven. One thirty-seven, three ninety-eight. Where's that number come from?
Where are you, Steve?
So, oh, that's the.
From, from default.
Yeah, yeah, from default.
Yeah, so you.
You have to go back to the one before that.
He's comparing it to the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five proposed, not the default.
Yeah, you're right. Okay. Any questions for the chief and assistant chief, deputy chief, sorry?
He's an assistant.
Assistant? He's the assistant, not deputy, okay.
He's the assistant deputy.
Whatever, whatever I need to be based on the day.
Which of these numbers do you think you're gonna have the hardest time working with the budget committee on?
Um, you know, at, at the, at the marginal increase that's, you know, well under the tax cap, I don't, I'm hoping that we won't, we won't encounter too many challenges. It's always, it's always.
Call increases.
It's always hard to say.
That you'll be able to present to them.
Well, yeah, well, that's, that's our only problem. We can't predict what we're gonna have for calls, but.
Right, but you can go over the increases that have happened this year, right?
Right.
Absolutely.
And you'll have that.
And also, the, the other thing that we're facing is our, the time on a call has increased. So we're having more calls at a substance so that we're there for a longer period of time. You know, we left tonight for a structure fire. Thank God, it wasn't really much of anything, but had that been something, that could have been four to six hours being on scene, so. Payroll-wise, you know, you go on a medical call, you're gone for half an hour versus you go for a structure fire or a gas leak or something like that.
Car accident.
Car accident, you could be there for multiple hours, and that's what incurs the payroll costs and.
I just want you to be prepared when you get to the budget committee with the information that you base this on so that you're able to.
Absolutely, all of the detail behind the numbers, we have.
Yeah.
So.
We're very well prepared.
In the past, we used to go line by line, and then last year we realized that all we're doing is wasting everybody's time. That's why, like, now the coming year, if it's net neutral, we're not even gonna review it. Just gonna look at the numbers if there's any incrementals.
Okay.
And that's what the budget committee has asked for as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for fire? You guys got anything else on here that you, no, 'cause can't do ambulance or anything else, right? You gonna do that? We can do the ambulance.
Can do the ambulance, wanna do the ambulance?
Forty-two fifteen ten. Do you wanna do the ambulance is a question?
No, he wants to bang it out. Ambulance, okay, unfortunately. And there's our contract.
Yep.
Currently. So the increase that you see is due to the contract. And of course, just like they said, and the number of calls, and so the contract's dependent upon the number of calls. Next year? Is it last year?
Yeah, the, the next year is the last year.
So we have a three-year contract?
Yeah, they, they wanted a five-year, we said no.
No.
So we did a three-year, and we'll see where we're at next year.
And you're gonna send it out?
Yes.
Questions for ambulance? What else do you guys need to cover?
Hydrants?
Hydrants, is that?
Hydrants, it's an ass.
Do you run from that, don't you, Doug?
I do, I do.
I think they should have to do it, they use them.
Everybody's favorite.
Right?
Yes.
We're gonna call them police hydrants, not fire hydrants anymore.
So I have sent a message to Don Ware at Pennetock. Of course, we know with the merger that this is one of the areas that we were feeling the most increase was hydrants. I do expect that it will go up. Right now, I have it at the twenty-twenty-five proposed. I do not expect it to stay there. But I have not heard back from Pennetock as to, it, it's all, it's all related on what their revenue estimates are. The revenue that they need to run Pennetock then gets spread over all of us municipalities now. And so they are in the process of working that out, and then we will get our updated hydrant numbers.
What do we pay, you have City of Manchester, one for two fourteen, what do we pay per hydrant?
We have a, our Manchester number has, I think, went up slightly in twenty-twenty-five from twenty-twenty-four, and it's like, I think it's one.
City of Manchester, one hydrant, two fourteen a quarter.
So what are we paying per quarter per hydrant for Pennetock?
Oh, I have a new listing of hydrants.
Oh, okay.
I'll go through and check. I think the number, there's numbers gone up slightly from two fifty because of the new additions up here.
Yeah, you have, uh, uh, Tellerico. There's, there's like four hydrants there, and then you have everything on.
Old horse farm?
The, the horse farm, and then you have Rose Meadow.
So I, it has gone up, but they did send it to me. I'll get the number and update that as I update the price.
Weren't they like twelve hundred, were they twelve hundred a hydrant? Something like that. It was a lot more in Manchester.
Yes, it was something like that. And, you know, they, they talk about this maintenance of the, of the hydrants. And so that's been an ongoing question. It was certainly a question that we posed during the merger. How Manchester can do it for two hundred and fourteen dollars a quarter? And Pennetock is, you know, three hundred, four hundred a quarter, but.
They provide the same water, or close to it.
Yeah.
Water's water.
Water is water, but. There are costs that go into that.
I believe that's all we have for you two tonight.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Actually, based on last year, it was eighteen hundred dollars a hydrant.
Eighteen hundred compared to.
My math is right, yeah, eighteen hundred versus eight hundred.
Yeah, please, we also, are you with the library?
Yeah.
He's just keeping me company.
If you don't mind, can we slide them in real quick and then we'll go over?
Oh, please, yeah.
Appreciate it, thank you, chief.
But you weren't having fun listening to everybody else?
Oh, yeah, it was a learning experience.
Slide in library, forty-five fifty dot twenty. Anne Eily?
Yes, you know how to say my name 'cause of Chrissy.
You got it. Cheated.
Yeah, that's all right.
What would you like me to bring up for you?
Proposed budget?
That, all right, no, that's last year's.
Nope.
Twenty-twenty-sixth proposed budget?
I think I put it in there.
Three forty-seven?
I thought you did, I sent it to you.
I do. Come on.
No?
Is it in there, do you see it?
I have three fifty-eight, six, ten for your budget.
Yes.
There it is.
That is, that is the budget.
There we go.
Okay.
That might be the first time in seven years I've got it first.
It's gone up twenty thousand?
Yes, so.
I'm sorry, what?
She asked how to rotate it.
How do I rotate? Mr. IT, how do I rotate?
Yeah.
I usually just pick it up and turn it.
Yeah. I usually download it, then I can do a, you can spin it up, no. If you download.
That's not working. It's not working.
Download it.
Yeah.
Download it, and then you can rotate it.
Download it?
Yep.
Usually, of course, I'm not sure what tool you're using there, but I can't see that far away. Then you should be able to rotate it after you come.
I never said I was a expert with.
Twenty-twenty-sixth proposed budget.
John's probably laughing.
Open in, yeah, John's.
They need access.
John's probably laughing, right? He's not watching us.
Or you can save it like it's a PDF and then rotate it.
I just opened it up and talked, but that was terrible.
Hey, when you get it figured out, can you let me in?
Not by the hand, ching, ching, ching.
No, I didn't get it.
Okay. It's, Diane, not mean to take you, take this long. I do not have a request, Mr. Leary. I don't know why, okay. Uh, now?
Can you rotate it there, or sometime? Right, that one, yep.
This one?
Oh, it's looking at you.
Yeah.
Well, if you save it as a PDF, maybe you could do it that way.
It is PDF, yeah.
Oh, it is a PDF?
Yeah.
Why won't it?
What's over to the left? Does it say you can do anything on that bluish area? What's that?
What's that?
Go to sleep?
It's upside down!
One more time.
One more time, Richard.
It's a good thing we have you here. It's a good thing we have you here.
Yes.
All right.
Right, that's what we need, the library here. Tell us what we're doing, okay.
Okay, so, yes, the biggest jump, if you go down to, talk about having vision problems, six thirty and six thirty-one, um-
That's hope.
That's hope. So, yeah, you-
Six thirty, yeah.
Yeah, you could go down a little bit further if you wanted up there, yeah. So, um, building, maintenance and repairs, and equipment, maintenance and repairs. So, the library's having a rough year this year. I know some of you are aware of that. We have work going on, um, that is being much more than we, not even the roof. Nope, this is inside the building. So, it's a, over a hundred-year-old building, and it's showing its age. I think it waited till Vicky left to give her some mercy. So, it is showing its age, so that ten thousand in, um, the building repairs is out of great concern, because what should have been a come-in, scraped down a wall and paint, um, instead has been come-in, oh, there's a hole there, oh, we gotta scrape this down to the terracotta brick, and gotta deal with drainage stuff, so, that just is an indicator of what is to come, being the age of the building. So, that's my, out of great concern on my part. We are going to tap into the library, um, maintenance fund greatly this year, because we are going to have to pay for this work. Um, we also need to address issues with our roof, so it's gonna come out of that library maintenance fund. So, my concern is, things happen next year. What money do I have to do some of the repairs that we need?
How much is in your maintenance fund right now?
Uh, it was about seventy thousand. And I know that we're gonna, what?
Extendable trust?
Yes, yes. Um, and, uh, it'd be great if the market could go great, and it could increase, but unlikely. And then the, um, other part for the, oh, any questions on that one before I explain the other one?
I, I will say that, that'll be a tough one for the Budget to swallow.
Yes. I, I imagined that would be the case, but you don't ask if you don't have.
Yep.
And it is an old building.
So, the expendable trust fund for the library, where does that money come from?
That money is the interest earned off of the amount that Aaron Cutler donated to build the library.
Okay, so it's variable, depending on how the market-
I don't know how it's managed. Are you familiar with that?
By the trustees, right?
Yeah, it's the trustee of the trustees that manage that.
Okay.
Yeah.
It might be the AT&T stock that they get that goes into their-
Is it? Okay, Karen knows everything.
Karen does.
Is there any restrictions on that?
That fund is for building, maintaining the library, whether it be building, or books, or whatever it takes to be the library.
Okay.
Traditionally, it's been primarily used for the physical building itself.
Okay.
Um, and as much as I would love to do some other things that are non-building in the library, yeah, those aren't gonna be at the top of the list.
What about grants? Are there grants that are available for repairs to old buildings like that?
Um-
Libraries tend to be historical in each town.
And I have been told that, and I have, the, um, Kim's actually brought it up, so I have to do my research. Um, one of the increases on the, um, dues and subscriptions is for the library to join the Association of Small Rural Libraries, because they have a lot of grants through that organization. So, um, hoping to do that next year, and then also to be able to access grants there. Um, this part, I haven't had as much time as I would like to, 'cause the building keeps doing stuff. So, um, I will be doing more into that, seeing what we can get for the building itself. The equipment, um, and, let me see, where's that line again?
Six thirty-one?
What?
Did you say six thirty-one?
Six thirty-one, yeah. Equipment, maintenance and repairs. Um, right now, I don't know how many of you spend time in the library, but it is small. And so, in the children's room specifically, we have bookshelves that are secured and don't move, and it does not give us adequate room for the kids and the families when they come in. When we do things, we wanna be able to move those, so that, um, there is more room. Just over, through June and July, um, the, June, July and August for our summer program, there was four thousand five hundred and forty-nine people just through the children's room alone. And so, it's a lot of wear and tear down there. We can't really move the things as we do things with the kids. The circulation desk upstairs, um, is in rough shape, and that needs to be re- replaced as well. So, we wanna do that, and, um, there's just other needs that we have there. From January to, uh, this, today, there was thirteen thousand and nine people that came through the library. So, there is a lot of wear and tear on the building. So, that's why I really bumped up those particular areas, so that we can get our building and our equipment and material, those materials where it needs to be to support it.
I appreciate you have those numbers, 'cause we've been asking for those numbers for a long time, and we'd never get the, how many people have visited the library.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I have that, yeah, yeah, I thought that-
I think you've asked that before.
But it's healthy, that's a, it's a great number.
It is very healthy.
We had no idea where it was, right?
It's, it's excellent, it's many more than I thought they were.
Yes.
Oh, if you went by in the summer, I even had Kevin Brown bring up, like, um, you guys need a new parking lot, because literally, the entire summer, staff parks on the grass, because we cannot take up a parking spot away from the patrons that are coming in. So, yeah, it's fun, it's great. It's just the building is-
It's good numbers.
-telling us its age.
Kevin has some ideas.
He did, he had some ideas, so-
And the town has grown.
It has.
Wonderful. Before, when it was a hundred years ago, they met the population needs, right?
The programs have grown as well.
They have them.
To be fair, I mean, they've got these wonderful programs that are out there, and that are getting all the kids ready for school and everything.
Oh, and we have some great adult programs for the fall. If you like fly fishing, if you like Kelson brewing. Yep, good things to come. Um, trying to see what else was the big jump. The items in red are because-
We don't have them.
I don't have those answers. Yes, that, that, that would be what it is. And then also, the other, one of the other big jumps was the pages. And that reflects the fact that, in the summer, we really rely on the pages to help us out with all the increased traffic we have, so we wanna be able to increase their hours for like, eight weeks, instead of just like, the five to six weeks that we do currently. Um, because the children's room, literally, um, January, they're already working on all their stuff, you know, for summer, and putting packets together, and the pages are a lifesaver as far as, you know, helping people when they're doing, you know, everyone else is doing the programs. Um, and the custodian looks like it increased a lot, but it really, it didn't, if you'll notice, um, the thirty-eight, forty from last year was because she was hired in April.
Cleaning service?
Yeah, the custodian, yeah.
One twenty-six.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, what else was up?
Now, line one twenty-six, custodian.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
We have a custodian and a cleaning service?
No, the, we don't have a cleaning service.
What's three sixty?
Two sixty.
Three sixty. Right above electricity?
Oh, that's to get the rugs cleaned once a year. Yeah. Because she doesn't clean rugs. And then, um, I think that, anybody have any other questions on there?
I would be prepared with six thirty, building maintenance and repairs, jumping ten, they're going to ask you to lean on your trust, expendable trust.
Yep. I, I anticipated that, and I'm hoping that by the time I face them, I'll have a better handle on what's gonna be expended from that trust this year.
So, and then the community programs has gone up thirty-four percent as well.
Oh, yes, that, because we're, the, um, people that we have come in to do these events, their prices are skyrocketing.
Maybe we should reduce some of the programs?
Um, we don't, well, what we are doing is trying to find the less ones. The summer reading program gets a lot of donations for that, to cover their, um, performers. But we also wanna be able to do more for the adult community. We don't have a tremendous, at this point, we haven't had a tremendous amount. In our fall, right now, we're not really paying a whole lot, um, for what we've got planned, which is good. But it is that, one of the goals I have is I would like to increase the program we do have for adults, and even maybe be able to target it a little bit more to, you know-
Maybe you wanna look at charging for some of those events then?
You can't, it's a public library.
Then you might have to look at reducing the events.
Yes.
If you're gonna, what percentage is this increase?
And community program isn't just the events, it's also, um, the materials that go into it. So, like, when, if you come to any of the events, what we, what we're, the crafts, the, um, things like that.
Okay, total, total increase for this budget?
The total increase is five point nine-three over the overall budget, is that what you mean?
Yeah. I think we gotta look at needs versus wants.
Mm-hmm. Yes, and our primary need is the building to remain.
Exactly, exactly.
But that's why I figure, you know, I'll ask.
Some of the other things that you want might have to come out.
Mm-hmm.
And that we all want, but this might be the year that you don't do that, and because you're gonna have to do this, like, just like at home.
Oh, yeah, I get it.
You know, at, at home, if you are fixing the patio, you might not be able to upgrade the bathroom.
It's only eleven over what the trustees proposed in twenty twenty-five. Does look like a large increase from default.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but over what they, they told you it would cost to run the library in twenty twenty-five, it's about eleven thousand, which is more the repairs and-
Yep, yeah.
And-
These are repairs.
And some of this in here has been compensated for by the fact that Vicky made more than I did. So, we're, you know, that's useful, but, you know.
Any, any questions?
Yeah, I, I don't think it applies to the town, but you accept, you accept donations? Does the library accept donations? Or can, is it allowed to be in a town entity? I don't know how it works.
The summer reading program?
Just in general, can you get a donation to the library?
Um, yes, we can accept donations to the library, yes.
But it's not, not nonprofit, so, could you-
Correct.
It's a nonprofit?
Oh, the library, it's a public library, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, if somebody, some people just want a nonprofit where they can take the deduction, right? Will they get a deduction if they donate to the library? No. It's not set up, that entity's not set up that way.
I would have to look into that, I don't know the answer.
That's what I'm, I'm just trying to think of, you know, some people might wanna donate to the library, you know?
Mm-hmm.
For any reason.
I think there's a lot of grants out there, too, that is good.
But I don't know how nonprofit works, or does it have to be, if they want a tax deduction to donate?
It's a different type of, um-
It's a different business entity?
It's not five oh one-three C, it's a five oh, oh, it is-
A government entity.
It's government, yeah, but it is, can be tax deductible.
So, and it-
But it's a different type of deduction.
So, what NRPC did is it gets money from the state and the Fed. They set up a five oh one C where the, where the money would go help NRPC with its mission statement.
We, there is-
Is there something that, I'm trying to think along that line?
Well, there is what's called Friends of the Library.
Oh, you do have that?
Well.
Okay.
You know that volunteer question that came up earlier? We could use some volunteers, 'cause it's, um, we don't ha- really have one right now.
But it sounds, so it's set up to have one?
We are, yes. We would love to have one, and I've been putting word out to people to see if they would be willing to do it, but no takers yet, yeah.
How many of the libraries do we have?
Yet.
But that's a good, you know, that's another way, hopefully.
Yes.
To craft that.
So, I'm, I'm thinking that you might wanna make some reductions before you go to budget. And because we can't just send it.
You wouldn't?
You wouldn't?
Budget, just like you are. Let them do the cutting.
Really? Okay. I thought we were supposed to, you know?
No, I think it's a decent budget overall.
Yeah, it's only eleven K over last proposed.
And part of that is the stuff that got voted in, so-
Yeah?
Yeah.
You know, it's really not, it's not a bad one.
And they can't let that building get into disrepair worse, I mean, it's a, it's-
I do still think we need-
You know, you have the water issue now, and you have the roof issue, right, so it's-
Correct, and, and that's what's happening downstairs right now.
Yep.
So-
Do you have somebody to fix the roof, to repair it?
Well, that's a whole other, I won't take your time with that tonight. Um, the water issue, the groundwater issue is what the board has to address right now, so.
But the roof has to be a certain material and everything, right?
It's slate.
Uh, that's, that's-
But it has to be replaced in time.
No.
It doesn't?
Not necess- mm, that's, we're working on resolving that. Yes.
Depends who you ask.
Exactly, it depends who you ask. The restrictions say no, but then, you know, and the trustee of trustees has no further information. I have not heard back from the Attorney General. There are asphalt shingles, or what do they call them? Architectural sing- shingles, which would be more like twenty-five thousand to get done, so-
Is it more than that to repair? What's, what's wrong with it?
If you, if we went with the bid I have to repair the roof completely as they put in, and maintain it for five years, it would be three hundred thousand. Because nobody does slateening anymore, and the roof is at its, has exceeded its life expectancy, so-
Slate doesn't really wear out. I mean, castles in Europe, two thousand years.
It, it falls off.
It's, some, some do, but they can be replaced.
Yes, but finding, it's having the people willing to maintain it. That's what we've run into. And yes, I ca- I have things that I need to continue to pursue. We just have an immediate issue. So, the board is having to look at all of that, get all the legalities correct, get all of the, you know, whatever we do needs to be legally, and it also, we would want to maintain the, um, aesthetics of the building.
So, it's been suggested that we speak to the charitable trust division, since it was a, a gift, and it did have, um, they, the charitable trust division at the state would be the one that should really weigh in.
And I have a message in to them.
Yeah.
It's a lot to do.
Busy.
I know.
Welcome to Litchfield, yeah.
I've been here. I'd just like to just be-
Welcome to this position.
I know.
Well, thank you very much tonight.
Thank you, guys.
Nice meeting you.
You too, say hi to Chrissy.
I will. Well, tomorrow, she, she's in bed already. She might have seen you sitting in the audience and said, "I'm gonna wait," and now, now she'll- Chief and Captain, come on up. Thank you for allowing the library to jump in real quickly.
In all fairness, we didn't know she was gonna take that long.
Two ten.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi, Anne.
Police Administration, forty-two, ten, ten.
So, I'm not gonna go through unless you want me to, you know, most of my increases are, are increases are contractual salaries and, and things like that, so, um, I'm not gonna go through each one of those unless there's some other adjustment that was made.
Now, if they're contractual in salary, that does-
So, going down to one twenty-five PD wages, special officers, uh, that's been reduced by actually quite a bit, um, because we had one of our part-time special officers, uh, reduced his hours, his regularly scheduled hours, so we're able to make an adjustment there. Uh, going down to one forty-one PD wages, captain overtime, that was just removed completely. That was just in there as a failsafe in case the captain had to work extra as a patrol officer, because we were so shorthanded. Um, but we seem to have been able to avoid that, so, uh, anytime, and he does go out on the road and answer calls, but not, and, and, you know, he does, it's not, no, excuse me, necessary for him to, to come in on an overtime basis.
Dennis has a life again?
Wouldn't say that.
Didn't have one before.
The, uh, three twenty-five prosecutor, again, that's a contractual thing that went up a little bit, but again, that's just a contractual thing.
Overall, you're only thirty-four thousand over the default budget. It's not bad.
Software down, uh, three forty-two PD software is down considerably. Um, well, that considerable, it's down, what, seventy thousand dollars? And that's from the IT director. I get those now. And that's from the IT director, I get those numbers from him, and he feels pretty good about that. Jumping down just a couple to three fifty-five, pre-employment screening is down a little bit, uh we just haven't been spending the allotted amount. And while we still have some vacancies, uh you know, I'm confident that we can stay within those numbers, so I was able to reduce that somewhat.
How many vacancies do you have now, I know you have.
Still have two full-time.
Two full-time, a, a full-time dispatcher and a part-time, or a special officer, as it's called on the budget. Uh dues is up just a little bit, a hundred and fifty dollars, um prices going up, things like that. Down to six thirteen, community relations supplies, again, we, we overspent that, um and just looking to try to do more to connect with the community, but again, we're talking about five hundred dollars.
And I think you're, what you've been doing with the community relationship has caught on, seeing some of the posts, a lot of people attend. Worth the money.
Absolutely. Uh six thirty, equipment maintenance and repair, uh again, just some costs have gone up with that, not, not a huge increase. And when you look historically, like we've had years where it was over the number that we're, we're currently budgeting. A big increase is vehicle repairs and maintenance.
So ugly.
We're, we're already overspent, you know, in, in August here, uh and it's not gonna get better next year, even if they say, you know what, go out and buy eleven brand-new cars, we're not gonna get them until September, October, by the time we are able to buy them, get them outfitted. It's taking four and five months, we got our car in early, into the company that does it for us, earlier than they expected, but just waiting on parts. So we actually, we're waiting for the phone call or text any day now to get it, but, you know, if, if we, even if we get cars, it's gonna be September, October before we get them, so I anticipate having to spend a lot of money on maintenance in the first three quarters of the year.
So the public know, in twenty twenty-five, the proposed was eighteen thousand five hundred, this year it's forty-five thousand, simply because the cars are continuously.
Continuously, it's, it's just a revolving door.
People that drive by Edwards would see that.
Uh.
Sub lot.
The way we're going after the cruises this year, the, in, in the twenty twenty-five proposed, we had three cruises purchased for two oh six, seven oh nine. Um we're looking at the potential of the municipal lease or loan, is, is I prefer to call it, because that's what it is. Um and the way we're looking to do that, it won't be in my budget for this first year. And then seminars and conventions are going up a little bit. It's twofold, obviously, like the fire chief was saying, that the cost of these things is going up. And because we've been so shorthanded for years, and you know, through COVID, and then we've been so shorthanded, people haven't been going to a lot of trainings, especially anything worthwhile, so I wanted to make sure that now that we're back up to staff and all that, that we can actually start sending people to some trainings.
Keep them trained, keep them here.
Exactly, thank you. Any questions on that budget?
Everybody? To police support services.
This one's even easier.
Two ten fifty.
Number one forty, we dropped the overtime down a little bit, just because we had not been spending it. So, like, you know, always like to have some, cause you never know what's gonna go wrong, like just losing, you know, our, our, one of our full-time dispatchers, if last day was last Friday. So now we're going to incur some costs there, but obviously that'll be all offset by the.
Absence.
The, by the absence, but then at some point when we hire somebody, there's gonna be training, which means that we're gonna be paying two salaries, and then somebody's gonna have to run the radio on top of that, so that, some of that will get eaten up, and we're fortunate in getting a, a part-timer who used to work here, who is experienced, and should be able to step in with minimal training to keep us afloat while we're transitioning. And then veterinarian services, we dropped a little bit, just we haven't been spending the money. Um so I knocked that down a little bit, but everything else is just contractual changes.
Any questions for the chief or captain?
It's a good budget.
I mean, I'm sure you can see even over the twenty twenty-five proposed, we're down over five percent over what we asked for in twenty twenty-five.
What's the health insurance decrease, the ten thousand, the only one that's showing a decrease in health insurance?
So that can only be from census.
It was a census, cause the second dispatcher came on and had a different census than the other dispatcher.
A census, I'm sorry.
Census, it's, it's what they had for health insurance, the person that left to the person that came.
Oh, okay.
So it, um, it was a savings.
We do not have health insurance rates, I just remind the board. Um so I have the second quote um coming in from a different agency tomorrow. We will look at it with the department heads and make some recommendations, of course, we won't have Health Trust until October. End of September, October.
Are you seeing trending on all the insurances going up again?
Um I, I would expect Health Trust to go up, yes.
But we, we'll definitely, how many?
I think we saw that um during the legislation that was introduced, that they are, are short in their reserve. I would expect that.
How many companies are you getting quotes from?
Uh we have two outside independent firms.
Two outside of Health Trust?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, repres, um recommended by other municipalities.
It's, it's rough to change them, but in the private sector, they're changing them probably every year.
Industry standard for healthcare is nine percent right now, that's industry standard.
Any more questions for the chief captain?
Thank you.
Questions for us? Very good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would you entertain jumping to agenda item five for a second, cause I would imagine that'll only take a second while we're sitting right here?
Yep. Back to whatever it is.
Oh, yes.
County Sheriff's Office, okay. Oh, yeah, okay, yep. Number five, memorandum of understanding Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, LPD for twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven Substance Abuse Enforcement Program. Thank you for reminding me of that, sir. What do you got to say?
Oh, yeah, if you're ready, so we've participated in this in the past, um not since I've been here, but going back three or four years, we were in it for several years. And what it is, is the county puts in, sheriff's office puts in for a grant, they get, uh as it says there, two hundred and ten thousand dollars to pay salaries, to get officers from various departments to join together and work on whatever, you know, the, the big drug problems are in the county. The upsides are several, one is, uh doesn't cost us anything, our officers get the opportunity to make overtime, it doesn't come out of our pocket, um which, to be honest with you, I don't think is a major plus for us, there's plenty of overtime to go around, so I don't think that's a big deal, but it is something that's there. The bigger things are, the officers get training, they get exposed to bigger investigations, different investigations, so that when we have things here, they're more knowledgeable to see what's going on, and they might pick up on things or be able to teach things to the other officers that maybe they would not have been able to do before. Also, it's a great recruitment and retention tool, the fact that we do these kinds of programs. And then if, God forbid, we do find ourselves with a major drug problem in this town, and I'm sure there's drugs, you know, usage, but uh, you know, we don't see street-level drug dealing or anything like that that you see in some bigger towns. But if we do have a problem in this town, then the whole team comes and helps us. So I think it's nothing but a benefit for the town of Litchfield.
I should read the, what it says, says that the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office has received prelim, preliminary notification that they will be awarded two hundred and ten thousand dollars under the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven Substance Abuse Enforcement Program. To receive final approval, they need an executed memorandum of agreement, not understanding agreement, from each participating agency. The Litchfield Police Department has participated in and benefited from this program in the past. The agreement is submitted for the Board of Selectmen's information.
Do you need a motion from us? Okay.
You got the MO, MOA that we have to sign, or is it just be the chairman?
No, it's the chief.
Oh, it's just the chief?
Just the chief, thank you.
Just the chief, wow.
You want this one?
When does it start?
Uh it'll be in twenty twenty-six.
It'll be in twenty twenty-six, yeah.
Very nice.
Okay.
I've taken advantage of stuff that's out there.
Absolutely.
When do you think you'll have your new truck in your hands?
We're waiting on a phone call any second.
There was a delay with one of the antennas that held up production, they've since received it, so it should be any day now.
Awesome. All right, thank you, gentlemen, thank you for staying late with us.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here too.
Thank you, some good night.
Good night, Ted.
Night.
Night.
All right, where are we now?
Personnel, no, insurance, I'm sorry.
Yeah, back to the budget.
So, been asked to table the personnel policy first read for tonight.
Oh, aren't we back on the budget, though?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, we're back on the budget?
I forgot too.
Sure.
Yeah.
Forty-one ninety-six?
Yeah.
So we don't have these numbers yet.
Okay, next. Personnel administration. Forty-one fifty-five ten. Swipe left, swipe left, swipe left. Too far.
So.
Not far enough. No, wait, no, we got it.
Okay, it's forty-one fifty-five.
And I can't even see it, there's snow, here we go. The later it gets, the less I can see. Okay. What do you want, insurance?
Oh, no, uh forty-one fifty-five.
Personnel.
Forty-one fifty-five.
Oh.
Let's see.
I've got it now.
He's doing it. Forty-one fifty-five. So the short-term disability is up, and um I actually, I believe um that this has the new increases of this August, it goes from August to July. Social Security taxes are up, Medicare is up, uh retirement is up cause of wages for uh police, fire, and employees, even though the REIT went down. Unemployment tax, we don't have yet, and workers' comp, we don't have yet. And the um FSA admin fees went down slightly.
And these are all estimates, right, Karen?
Yeah, the, like the FSA admin, it depends on how many people sign up on how much the fees are, but I think the two ninety-seven is pretty good. Yeah, there, there are estimates on what the wages are right now, if any of those happen to change. Any of the taxes or um retirement will change. And then, again, we don't have the unemployment or workers' comp.
Good.
So it's down from the twenty twenty-five proposed and up from twelve thou, from um the twenty twenty-five default.
Yeah. Twelve thousand.
Yep.
I don't, I don't think.
Estimated.
A substantial increase.
More than that.
Some, all insurances have gone up across the nation, so.
Any more questions on personnel administration? All right, advertising and regional associations, forty-one ninety-seven, ten. Forty-one ninety-seven.
An increase.
Increase of what, ten dollars?
In the amount from NRPC slightly.
So it's, it's, it's down from last year, right?
No, it's.
But the committee approved, you're seventeen three twenty-one.
Yes.
Now you're asking for seventeen zero seven five.
So the public notices and ads, we haven't been spending um that to date as much, so we lowered that, and then NRPC went up slightly.
Okay.
Is that it for budget? We got two. That's it, all right.
That's it, right?
That's it.
We did, we did emergency medicine, yes?
Yeah, the zero, zero. No, we're increases, don't be interested.
No, I thought it.
But that's what fire said, and I checked them.
Twenty-four hundred, equipment purchases up?
Uh so twenty-five proposed to twenty-six proposed, looks the same. So that's what they were, they were going by, is what they proposed. And then, so, next meeting, um we'll start to talk about, you know, the revenues and um the tax cap calculation, how much we're over the cap.
Yep.
What adjustments, and certainly if you have items that you'd like to see more detail, just let us know, and we'll bring that, that in um for that meeting, cause I know that's generally when you start to look at making some adjustments, if you're going to make some. Um but I, I doubt very much we'll have any more information on the missing, maybe hydrants, if, if I get that information. Which is common, we've gone to budget without insurances.
Estimating.
Yep. Unfortunately.
Back to the agenda now?
Yeah.
So been asked to table personnel policy until next meeting, that would be number six. Policy against harassment, second review, first read was eight eleven twenty twenty-five, number seven.
Did I see harassment mentioned in the personnel policy as well, it seems to be that.
Yes, uh good point, so there was a uh section of the personnel policy which spoke to sexual harassment. Excuse me.
I'm catching nine.
And we, so now we are just referencing in the personnel policy to please see the separate policy, because you really need to cover all types of harassment. And so this um policy um came right from the suggested language from Primax.
Just wanted to make sure that they weren't, you know, they made, they made sense together.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Are we prepared to approve this tonight? I'd like to read it again, okay, there's a lot of red in here.
And uh, I, I don't think there's any red in uh.
No, we're doing policy against harassment, number seven.
Yeah, we're gonna table.
Next one.
Personnel.
Yeah, we, we tabled the personnel until next time, next meeting. So number seven, policy against harassment, second read first. Was eight eleven.
It's come a long way since the seventies and eighties.
Good times, isn't it?
Wow.
And for the better, yeah. And for the better, yeah.
I think I'm ready to approve it. I don't know what everybody else feels.
Yeah, I got it earlier.
Yeah, I did too.
It aligns with, and you read at work.
Yes, yeah.
It made sense to me, too.
It's a pretty standard policy, and I think, you know, every, I think it covers the individuals that needed to be covered, which is basically anyone. It does give the employer the right to do corrective action, disciplinary action, help them to, including termination, if it warrants that. And then it speaks to the retaliation, which is important. There are many different types of harassment.
Yeah, we've got a lot in example to you.
Where did you get the wording for this, anyway? Did you just, Primex or other towns?
Primex, yeah.
The motion that we accept this.
All right, Diane has made a motion to accept the, we'll get back to it.
Policy against harassment, reporting procedure for harassment, discrimination, and retaliation.
All right. I have a second.
Basically, everybody stay in your office and don't talk to anybody.
Pretty much. It's the no fun.
We've become that society, yeah, no fun.
But this is, like, so standard, this is like, I've had all kinds of corporate training, even back fifteen years ago, that were the same thing.
All right, Diane has made a motion to approve. I have a second.
I'll second.
A little second. Additional discussions?
Yeah, well, I mean, one I see here, brushing against someone's body. I mean, if you accidentally brush against somebody and they take it as an unwanted advance, are you gonna get screwed to the wall?
No, so, I mean.
What if they're adamant about it, oh yeah, he meant to do that, or she meant to do that, or, and they're adamant that it was an unwanted advance?
Sorry, everything has to be investigated, that's the employer, that is the employer's unfortunate.
So much is subjective, I mean, leering, staring, I mean, it's all subjective. It really is.
Doors off all, doors off all the offices. Two people, and at least three in a meeting, right? That's what it does, it's come back.
We have to have one, is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, and the one that we had was not sufficient. You know, I think people need to be careful, because over, when you report something that isn't, there's a responsibility on both sides, right? There's a responsibility to try to be careful of how your fellow employees may take your actions, but there's also a responsibility not to run and report everything that may not be. It may not be, I may not be looking at Bob with, you know, cross-eyed.
Even this, even this.
I look at you cross-eyed all the time.
Yeah, I mean.
But I know you don't.
It really is tough, I mean.
It is, it is. But to a certain extent, this is why you need a healthy work culture. Because if you have a healthy work culture, these things don't become as much of an issue. So, it really is the work culture you have, and making sure that it's healthy.
That people know each other's mannerisms and.
That's right, yep.
Any other discussion? All right, I have it first by Diana, second by Kim. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
It's a reluctant one.
It is, it is, totally.
Motion.
I understand.
Motion reluctantly passes.
It's really tough.
It is.
Well, the next one's not gonna be much easier.
You look nice today. My God, you know, I've made, I've made a comment.
What's that supposed to mean?
Yeah, right? What are you, what are you looking at?
What's the next one?
Oh, so I've got some bad news on.
Bad news?
Yes. I have to take total responsibility for this. So, Chairman Brunel contacted me, asking me if we had a facility name and policy. I said, of course we do. And it wasn't on the website. And when I went back to research it, it was approved on July tenth by the board. This is the policy. Unfortunately, this is horrible, I went on vacation the week following July tenth, and I did not put the policy in the next consent for you to sign. So, the policy has never been signed, totally my fault, but Chairman Brunel thought, new board, maybe you look at it, give it another glance, if it's acceptable with everybody, we can just approve it now, you know, approve it next meeting. If it's not, we should make the changes that you want. So, again, my apologies.
So, it's a first draft.
Yeah, so what's the word, what, do you wanna table it and give it a read, and then come back next meeting?
As I didn't see it there, and it was my fault, I, and it looks like I had something on the motion to say, right? Concerned that it did not know why the town was not following the same process.
Yeah, I.
I'd have to go re-see, you know, I'll just reread it, and it hopefully comes back.
So, let's, we'll table this.
Yep, we'll read it.
Ask everybody to reread, and then we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Typical first read.
NRPC update.
Yeah.
Who that is you, Miss Queen.
That is me.
Oh, you had good things last time about the NRPC, right?
Well, we've had a change of, not we, DOT. You're gonna close the door?
No, she's going in the bathroom.
Oh, sorry, I don't need to broadcast that, sorry.
We'll be in broadcast.
Way to go, Kim.
All right.
I'm sure that's covered under the harassment policy.
And you'll have to watch the video on this one, I'll give you my notes, but it's gonna be, all right. So, NRPC, as you know, we, one of the things that we do is vote on transportation projects, the ten-year plan, thirty, forty years old kind of plan. We're an advisory group, all the towns weigh in, you can't vote if you're on the list for a project, there's a lot that goes into this. So, at the last NRPC meeting, I knew about a month ago, but I wanted to wait till it became public, DOT has looked at its ten-year plan, and up to thirty years. They currently have a four-hundred-million-dollar shortfall on the projects. So, what caused the shortfall was, number one, was COVID, because nobody was driving to go through the toll booths to pay the tolls. After COVID, not a lot of people went back to work, we're not quite back to where that level was. The gas tax then can't help as much, we're not driving as much. So, the shortfall for the two years, plus this compounded it. But the real item that really did it in is when you submit a project, you have to go through the engineering fees, the right-of-way, everybody does research, then you get to construction costs. When we do formulas from DOT, they give us the formula, they up, if a project's due ten years out, they usually put a three-to-five percent inflation in that number, so you'll know exactly what to pay, got close to it. The construction costs are currently at thirty percent, going up. So, that's the reasons, they have a shortfall of money coming in, and the construction costs have skyrocketed. So, the executive committee had met and was notified, the governor, so. What has happened is any projects that were approved last year, that everybody on the T-TAC and gas at committees, are going away. Anything that is approved by the legislature this year in the budget, they will go through, I think it's a one- or two-year look back. They will get engineering and right-of-way, the construction costs, they will construct it as they can. All right, current ongoing projects will continue, if they have something started, they will try to finish it, if it's at a good point to stop. The rest, they looked at, and a lot were gutted, and one of us was the Corning Road Route Three-A intersection, which is unfortunate. So, solutions they're gonna look at, just to get out of this mess. They could, they're looking at right, raising the tolls a dollar. If they do, they're looking at the gas tax, obviously. People who buy electronic cars also get a bill, where they make a estimate, what you would have paid fuel-wise, so they, you know, and it worked out pretty well, talking to a few people, it's pretty right on. If they get the dollar raise, they can keep the maintenance going on the turnpike, which is in very good shape. They can fix a few traffic areas that are slow, they will probably, they could squeeze in, if you go up to Manchester Exit Five-Six Amoskeg, where they have that rotary, where they dump you from zero to fifty with a, like, a hundred-foot, if they wanted to do that. So, that is what's going on there. If they wanted to, so the governor can control the tax hikes. What the governor can't control is if they wanted to extend the turnpike to Conte Cook and Bow, like they were thinking of doing, that was a project out there in the future, legislation would have to be involved to extend the turnpike. They would also probably focus on some red bridges, so, the other thing they're looking at. I'll go to the easy one, the Fed formula that we get, the federal formula, New Hampshire comes in fiftieth out of fifty, even Vermont beats us, so we don't get a lot of dollars, so they're gonna look at the federal formula. Block grants, that's what I, we had Maggie Goodlander here, apparently I said it in public, which is fine. We said, please keep an eye on those block grants for us, we rely on those for our roads and other projects. So, what happens when a, and I'm gonna say it, and we all know it, whoever's in power sets the grants, that's the terminology you need in the grants, what are the buzzwords? Some of their friends get the grants, whatever, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter who's in power. Forget that, it's time-consuming to write grants that are specific. It's to, just to administrate them, to make sure you're writing them properly. So, they're gonna look at given larger block grants, instead of specific grants, a big chunk of money, do what you want. So, they're gonna try to look at that kind of thing. So, it's not great news, the tax model obviously has to be looked at very closely, so there's, you know, they're all working on this, the governor is working on this, the executive committee. So, I don't have great news to report on that. Apparently, we found out about the bridge during the planning board, before I could tell you here, but that's okay. Not the bridge, the intersection. So, it's unfortunate, so we're not the only town, obviously, a lot of projects were taking off.
Lived with Corning Road for more years.
Yeah, it's already gonna fail, right, it was already at a C minus or a D, it was already gonna fail within, yeah. I'm not saying, you know, we'll have to look at, the other thing they should do, they brought up Nashua, is sometimes projects are on the thirty-year plan, maybe you need to look at your plan, maybe it's not really needed anymore, or that set of politicians is out, you don't need it, so they're gonna look at that, too.
There were a lot in that for projects.
A lot of projects.
A group of us, you know, rated the projects for NRPC, and so, a lot of people spent a lot of time. There's a lot of dedicated hours to all these people writing the projects, all these people rating the projects, then they go to vote at T-TAC, then they go to vote at the, you know, all the way up the chain, it's a lot of work.
It's all going.
And it's, if you have a grant that you have to pay twenty percent, so it's a million dollars, your town has to pay two-hundred thousand, okay, the cost is going up thirty percent a year, you know, you've already approved the two-hundred thousand, but can you go back and finish? So, they, it's a problem everywhere, I'm sure they'll come up with a solution, but right now, for the next year or two, we have to see what they come up with. But, you know, the good news is, we do have very good roads in New Hampshire overall, if you go down to Mass, you hit the potholes. I'm hearing Vermont, it gets a little grayer on the, you know, the roadway, so I'm glad we're ahead of that.
That's true. Thank you, Kim.
Sorry about that news.
It's good that we have you to keep us up on this. Don't ever leave.
Yeah, but I just figured out how the grants worked. That's why I went there, why isn't Litchfield getting any money? Well, nobody's getting any, for now, you know, the minds will get on it, though, they'll work on it.
All right, so the next two, ten and eleven, fire chief contract, IT director contract. I'd like to at least put this out there, so we could have some discussions on it. So, let's go with number ten first. Fire chief contract proposed twenty-twenty-six to twenty-twenty-nine. Fire chief currently has a existing contract that actually does not expire until May, or it's June, July, August, twenty-nine. Yeah, so, what we're looking to do essentially is give him a new contract early, with the sole purpose of being able to have some solid numbers to give the, you know, for the budgets.
But it wouldn't take effect until May of next year?
Wouldn't take, no, it would not change his contract at all until May.
So, then it's really not early?
No, no, but we'll be signing it there once early.
Right.
Doug has looked this over, Doug is okay with it, it aligns with all the other contracts that we have written, two percent increase year-over-year for three years. You know, actually, we should make a motion, entertain a motion, then we could discuss it. I'll make a motion to review, discuss, and potentially approve the fire chief contract for proposed twenty-twenty-six to twenty-twenty-nine.
I second it.
So, as I was saying, we're just trying to get numbers, so that we can have a solid budget, or at least something to plan against, instead of being speculating. The only big changes in here, a couple verbiage changes, he gets an extra day, because now he gets Labor Day for holidays. The rest of the contract is pretty much straightforward with what he's been doing, and it will not take effect until his existing contract expires, so this will not come into effect until May of twenty-twenty-six. Mr. Larry, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Yeah, this is extremely unusual. Most contracts in this town, usually you don't even enter a discussion on a new contract until thirty, thirty to sixty days before the contract runs out. The old fire chief had that in his contract. The town administrator had it in his old, in his old contract, I mean, pretty much everyone's done that.
You couldn't, you wouldn't have discussions until thirty to sixty?
Yeah, that's when you enter into negotiations. You can do a placeholder in the budget, and just say, we think this is what it's gonna be. But to do this, it's highly unusual, and quite frankly, I will vote against it based on that principle. Not that I don't want Doug, I think he's a fantastic chief, but I don't think this is right. And quite honestly, when, when I first got on this board, the town administrator's contract came to us at the end of my first year, at the end of twenty-nineteen, and it was presented to us, members of the board, as we were going to get him on a five-year deal with a two percent increase annually. Come to find out, that wasn't why that was brought to us, that was brought to us because people on the board felt that there was gonna be a new board coming in, and didn't want members voting on it, afraid that it would fail. That came out in a future meeting, where there was a heated argument between members of the board. So, it's the one time since I've been here that I feel I got snuckered by my board, and I will not even, I won't entertain even discussing it until, until it's within its proper timeframe. You wanna put a placeholder in, that's fine.
I think that we should, my opinion is, I think that we should take what this gross salary increase would be as of May at two percent, and definitely put that in there, but I agree with Bob that the contract wouldn't be signed and wouldn't be done until, I mean, it doesn't mean he's getting it, it means he, it's what's possible, up to two percent.
It says proposed on it.
Yep.
Number ten says proposed.
Yep.
Yeah, I like, I like the idea that you don't wanna undermine a board coming in.
Yeah.
I, I think that's good. Goodwill.
And really, there's not even any negotiating on this, it's just handed to us, too, you know? Usually, two members of the board sits with the individual, discussing their contract, and then it's brought to the board for approval.
Yeah.
Always been done that way.
And I think that's a good way to do it.
Right.
And we know what we're gonna do with it, but it still should follow the process.
Are we doing a review of him every year as well?
I think Kim does, right? Do you do the review of him, the department?
Well, yeah, so, I mean, I'm a, I'm happy to do, of course, whatever the board wishes me to do. His first contract, I negotiated, I drafted and brought to the board, and the board, you know, gave me some feedback back, and I went back to Doug, and then, same thing with, you know, the chief, so. We didn't mean to work this any differently, we thought we'd bring it forward, if you had. We thought we'd bring it forward if you had, if the board had some feedback, we'd handle it the same way. So, I mean, my apologies if this was handled differently than it has been with past TAs. I certainly see your point about you have a new board. We can put the two percent in the budget and bring it back to you in April.
And I'm not even seeing that language in the new contracts. That was in all of the old contracts. That negotiations would begin thirty to sixty days. Because the old fire chief had a contract, whereas if a new contract wasn't rendered within, I think it was within the last thirty days, it automatically renewed and rolled over. So we had to, we lit, we had to terminate the contract in a board meeting to enter a new contract.
Yeah, I would advise against an automatic renewal.
Yeah, well, yeah, we pulled that out. That was pulled out by the board because the old board put that in and, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't good.
And sometimes it's good to pause too and say, what went well, maybe this needs improvement. What do you think is a strategy going forward, you know? But if you, if you get a big one, you don't have time. You know, if it's auto renewal, it's like, well, you know. It's a good pause.
I didn't even think about the undermining the next board, I wasn't even thinking that.
I'm thinking about. It didn't even have to happen because the previous administrator had the support of the board. He was going nowhere. You know, the contract was gonna get renewed. It was just a sneaky thing to do.
Yeah, I, I, I wasn't thinking that angle. I was looking at it where the contract aligns with the other contracts we had in place, same percentage. I don't think Doug's going anywhere, I don't think we're gonna push him away. And if we can get a solid number for budgeting, it would help, but I, I.
I would take, I would take it as a, I would definitely take it as a budget placeholder.
Put it in the two percent.
Absolutely. But I also think that we should be reviewing Doug. Because he does a really great job and we should be taking that opportunity and, and doing those reviews. I know it's, I know it's time consuming and Kim would definitely be in on helping on that, but I think it should be delivered by the board. Cause he directly reports to us.
The other thing is, I notice this is only a three-year contract and the other department heads are all at five.
I don't like, I don't like five.
The chief is at five, the deputy is at five, or the captain's at five, you're at five.
I, I think they're three, I'm nearly five. Yeah, because.
Was Ben was five then?
Dennis and Dan.
Troy was five, I think.
Troy was five, yeah.
Troy was five. The two chiefs were new contracts, so you did three.
John was at five.
Yep, John was at five, yep.
Yeah, I think they all should be three now.
I think they should be three as well.
Okay, so then.
April till April and two percent?
Yeah, Ben's was five.
You have your two percent for your budget, right? Who's what, who's budget, John's budget, right?
As of May.
John's budget.
As of May, that, that number will.
Well, but he's on the budget committee, right? So he has the number.
We'll readdress this in May, I mean, April, and then at that time, we'll also give him a, a re, one review.
We can do it in March.
Can you just make that notation?
March or April. Later date.
The department heads should be, should definitely be reviewed by us.
All right, so then.
Totally different than what's been done.
Well, the fire department, the police department. Do we actually review the clerk? We don't because she's elected.
She's elected.
No, she's elected.
Yeah. All right.
Moving on to number eleven, IT director contractor status. And once again, another discussion. The intention here is to try to get a, uh, stable budget. His contract goes, as you were saying, January first, twenty twenty-one, ends January twenty twenty-six.
December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
December thirty-first, correct, yeah.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five, yeah. Two percent, he's been getting two percent all along. I don't think there's really anything that changed too much in here.
I would change it to three years. I would, Steve and I did this together, but what I did was to look at what is being paid for IT people in the towns that surround us. And I was lucky enough to get in touch with Sean from the town of Londonderry. And he has just gone through this. And there's, it's kind of a two-step thing. One is that they've taken contracts that were given to people that were as a contractor. And we need to be very careful with contractors.
I didn't do that.
Yeah, because if they're working only in your office, only in your office, for forty hours a week, then they're no longer a contractor. They need to be taken in as an employee. So Londonderry reworked theirs and got, went away from contracts because theirs was actually, their, their people were actually employees. And it cost more because now all of a sudden, they're employees, there's pensions, there's insurance. So John is an actual contractor because he has a full-time job somewhere else, or has a job somewhere else.
Yes, no, he's an employee.
Is, so his contract says employee.
It says employee, all right. Well, this says employment contract, right?
The only thing I would have exception with is looking at the, um, exception for he's a salaried employee.
Can I say something?
According to that.
Can I cut you off just for a second, cause I think it's important? I think I'm gonna be very compassionate for our IT professional and our town. I think our IT professional needs to be paid what he's worth. I do agree to that. And, but we also have to protect the town because his contract is not paying him what he's worth. He's on the upper end of those hours and he should be paid what he's worth. So from a budget point of view, I think we need to take this offline, RSA ninety-one, eight-three-two, if we do it. And really come up with his hours, and we can do that through the time cards, we can go back years and see what the average is. And really get a person who agrees to whatever those hours really are being done and pay them properly. Because we have a liability, you were here for the lawyer, Diane wasn't on board yet. We have to pay them the amount of hours they work. So we have to have this contract really reflect that. So I'm just looking at the, the contract. And there is a, an error in the contract with part-time salaried because it doesn't meet the labor requirements. It's wrong, cause he's, the salary is wrong, it won't meet the threshold. So the contract itself is wrong. And I think compassionately, we need to look at, the person working needs to be paid what they work. And we, as a town, have to be protected to pay them what they worked.
What are we protecting ourselves against? I'm confused.
So.
If somebody works more than they're contracted for, you have to pay them.
You have to pay them.
Have to pay them.
You can't have a contract for twenty or twenty-five, work thirty-five and pay them for twenty, you can't do that. So we need to look at the time cards.
Does he have a time card?
Yes, he does.
Everybody does.
Everybody, it's by law, in the policy book, you have to submit one honestly and put the right time down. So we can look back.
What does his, what does his time card show?
Well, Kim will have that, so she can grab that because, but that should be non-public.
That would be non-public.
But, but again, whatever he's working, he should be paid for, or the IT professional should be paid for.
So along those lines, some of the thought process here too, when I, when I spoke to the IT director, he did not want any increases. But my thought is, we have to close that equitable gap. And even if we do it at two percent each year, we're still, you know, we're not gonna get IT services for twenty-eight thousand dollars.
But that's not the problem. The problem is, we have to pay them what they work.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
So we have to be compassionate to our town people to pay them.
We can easily add a hundred thousand dollars to that pay.
But I'm widely concerned about the hours worked. We can figure out the pay.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's figure both of them out, is what I'm saying.
Right, right.
What is it really you're working? What does the town need today and five years out? That's a conversation we need offline.
He is definitely helping out the town now by offering the service he, he does at the rate that he requests.
But it's illegal.
But it's going, but it's also gonna catch us. If he decides to be done, or as we say a lot in the industry, if he gets hit by a bus, what do we do?
No, what we're doing today is illegal. We have to pay him for what he works. And we're not doing that. Anybody, I'm not, I'm not saying our current, I'm just saying anybody who works in the town hall, you have to pay them for what they work. And he's an employee and you have to do that.
Is it something he's able, because that's what he's good at, to volunteer? I mean, as a volunteer, I was never paid for work.
Maybe, maybe it started out at twenty and it just grew, you know, it could've. He's been doing this for a long time.
It was increased to twenty-five hours.
Yep, well, whatever the hours are, we just need to look at it. That's all I'm saying, just make the, make the contract real so you don't put him in a position or her. Having to fill out a time card, that's not right. It has to be correct. That's all I'm saying, it has to be right.
The only thing I'd, I'd say is be very careful, you can't volunteer the same thing you get paid for.
Yes.
Can't do that.
See, these are laws I don't know, but that's, so that's what I mean, take it offline, make, so I don't know if you can go to budget now until we know.
And he's a, and he's a salaried employee then?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that's.
So, so you're a salaried employee and, and are you working forty hours a week?
Times two, yeah.
Karen, you're a salaried employee. Are you working forty hours a week?
Are you sitting, getting paid sitting with us tonight?
When you say you're a part-time employee, this would be like somebody saying, I'm gonna hire you for twenty hours and make you work for forty and only pay you for twenty. So some people are salaried and they know sometimes it's thirty-nine, sometimes it's fifty.
Still talking about being paid for a forty-hour position and making her work maybe.
So she'll go into the labor laws about part-time, yeah.
Who is part-time exempt, part-time salaried, okay? So, you know, but by law.
You can't go over.
You can't be a part-time salaried employee if you make less than twenty-seven sixty-three an hour. That's the minimum you have to pay for an computer employee exemption.
And it fluctuates every year and it really spiked this year.
I mean, it changes with the FLS.
But your contract, but an employment contract isn't gonna be able to fluctuate yearly.
Twenty-seven sixty-three for what employee?
Oh, twenty-seven sixty-three an hour for a compu- computer employee exemption, which is basically a part-time.
And how much is, and how much is he, is that position paying right now?
I'll just figure out, twenty-eight.
Six ninety a week, is, is that the twenty-seven?
Yes, sorry, yep, yep, that's what we came up with.
Right now, he says, he says it's five forty-nine a week.
Sixty-three, I think he's, the current contract is.
Five forty-nine, fifty-five a week.
Divided by how many hours?
Twenty-five.
By five hours, five hours.
We're entering gray area, please let me know, we'll stop if we shouldn't be discussing this. I think we're okay now.
I think we're okay, we're talking the, the compensation.
IT director's budget.
Yeah, this contract's public information.
Yeah, yeah.
So right now, it's a twenty-one dollars and eighty-two cents an hour.
So he's being underpaid at this point.
Is that what it comes out to be, twenty-one?
So this year, it's twenty-seven sixty-three, so for twenty-one hours, twenty-five hours, he would have to be paid six dollars more an hour.
If, if you wanna make it a salary exempt position.
That's what it is right now.
But you still have to report what you're actually working. That's.
But Kim doesn't report what she's actually working.
No, but the part-time one, right? You have to fill out a time card.
This is what he's being hired at.
No, no, you have.
I submit a time card every single week with my exact hours when I come into the building.
Pass the audit.
Why use salary employees submitting time cards?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Because I was told that it was needed for, um, retirement purposes.
All right, you have to fill out a absent, I forget what it's called, a form to say that, yes, you do work the forty hours. Cause you have to work thirty-five or more hours, thirty-five to forty hours should be a full-time New Hampshire retirement eligible employee.
But if you're exempt, you already get forty.
Then you're, if you work less than thirty-five hours a, a week as an exempt employee, you're not eligible for New Hampshire state retirement. So when they come in and audit you, I mean, you can, but you have to fill out a form.
But he's not, he's not gonna get a pension or?
No, he doesn't.
He gets nothing with that.
No.
I can tell you, in other municipalities, they do not, salaried employees do not report the exact time they came in and the exact time they left.
And they shouldn't.
It's eight hours, eight hours, you know, eight hours earned, eight hours paid, eight hours, you know what I mean? It's just, was I here, was I not, was I here, was I not? And, and that has been sufficient, but, I mean.
Maybe that's something we should readdress.
I, I do think it's something that needs to be addressed. I, I don't think, unless the board feels differently, I don't think that it matters if a salaried employee comes in at seven-thirty and works till ten-thirty? Or comes in at seven-thirty and works till five? At the end of the day, I think the town wants to make sure that they have got the forty hours that they.
But I don't think there's very many employees in this, because we're so small, everybody works more. That's on salary. I, I mean, I think that if you're not working more, it would, it would be glaringly obvious that the position was not being done. Because we all wear a lot of hats.
I've always, as a salaried employee, I've never punched a card or anything else. And I've always, it's been dependent on my tasks, as long as I'm getting my tasks done. If it takes me twenty hours or it takes me eighty hours, I have to complete that task.
Exactly.
And that's, that's my flex time.
Yeah, I think we could look at this the same way. If you're saying that there's a minimum payment for someone who does what he does per hour, then I say we adjust it. And, and for twenty-five hours at twenty-seven sixty-three. But as far as him doing a, a time card, I don't think he should do one either. He has a list of, of tasks that are on here that have to be accomplished and that can be accomplished in twenty-five hours.
So how much would this go up if we paid him the six ninety?
We'd have to look at his time cards to see.
But we don't have to.
Yes, we do.
Because he's, he's doing, he's doing it as a salary contract for twenty-five hours. The same way she's doing it.
This is where I think we have to go into non-public, cause we have, you know, information. We need a non-public. I think we need a non-public. I'm just trying to fix the contract. The contract says twenty hours, which means they can't work, or twenty-five, they can't work more than that. But if they are, we have to fix it.
They work more than that.
That's where we need an attorney, I don't, the, the labor laws is what we're looking at, right?
We need an attorney to know that a salary is there.
Naomi said we have to pay them for what they work.
Well, yeah, that's what she said.
So there's, there's two different things. So if, if he's, if, if the contract calls for an exempt part-time, you can be a part-exempt part-time person. Then, you know, you pay him, it doesn't matter if he, if he's exempt for twenty-five hours and he works twenty-eight, doesn't matter. He's, cause he's exempt, he doesn't get overtime, he doesn't get, but there's a rate, a minimum rate for you to do that.
Which she's saying is twenty-seven sixty-three.
Government has calculated it to be this.
Twenty-seven sixty-three. So it doesn't matter what his time card says, cause he shouldn't even be having to fill one out. Especially if he's not looking for, what, what she's saying, she feels hers out, is to make sure she gets her.
Yeah, if you want the person to be salaried, part-time salaried.
Minimum rate is twenty-seven sixty-three.
Yep, but I will tell you that if we don't do that at twenty-seven sixty-three, that what the local going rate for a person that is a technology coordinator, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And then that person has, working for them, an assistant technology coordinator of eighty-nine thousand dollars. Has an assistant tech coordinator that also is getting eighty-nine thousand. And a technology assistant that is also getting seventy-one thousand dollars a year. And this is all in the one town of Merrimack, okay?
Merrimack's a much bigger town.
But it's only the town, Bob, it's not the schools too.
It's a much bigger town than Litchfield.
It is, and I couldn't get any of her information yet, and I, I will have that as well. What we're saying, are they, are they one, two, three?
Did some homework as well.
Are they a hundred and forty-four thousand?
Huge, it's huge. I mean, there's a big range there, right? So, I mean, you've got ranges, but.
But he's, we're, we're getting a hell of a deal.
Oh, yeah.
Folks, a hell of a deal. So I did the research, cause I was asked to work on it, Hudson. Hudson has, they have four full-time people.
Wow.
And then they also have overtime, six thousand dollars callback. So, their IT budget for a, are they four times bigger than us? Is, is Hudson four times bigger than us? 'Cause if, they're not four times bigger than us.
They're like thirty-two, thirty-three.
They're almost a thirty.
All right, so then, then it would be a quarter of that, which is four forty-seven, one oh seven. So, say we're a quarter of his big. It, we're still paying significantly less, um, because of what he does and the way he does it. And if we need to bring it up to twenty-seven sixty-three and get, and we have someone who will sign that contract, who has backup that will cover it for that amount.
And that's just contract.
Does this expire December?
December thirty-first.
September, so we're getting a little time. But this is gonna be a tough one, because we need numbers that we give to the budget, you know, part of the budget, and we know it's gonna go up.
We know it's gonna go up. Well, it's already going up, effective January first, twenty-twenty-five, it's already, oh, it's already twenty-eight fifty-five sixty-seven right now.
So, this contract doesn't say he's exempt.
It's a...
It's a salary.
Salary.
It says salary, yeah, not salary exempt.
Well, then it should.
Call it up again. I just have to look, I haven't looked at it. Get rid of that summary.
All right.
Well, if it's salary, he's not getting overtime, and...
So, it's not a week.
So, that's what it would be?
Well, what would that be, anyone? What would this new contract be? What would its new contract be?
Already signed, yeah.
Yep, okay.
I think we should probably put that in once the place will...
Can you?
I think he should speak with them.
Yeah, he will, I know he's in Salem, won't he?
I know he is too, but...
But he also...
But he, he will understand the rationale of twenty-seven sixty-three, more than he will understand we're gonna...
Yeah. I'll send you the language, yeah.
So, does that solve both problems at the moment? It solves both problems, right?
Yes, yes.
He is all right, he's exempt.
Yep.
And he's making...
I'm not even saying he, the IT person.
The IT person.
I would just focus on the contract, right?
As we need it right now.
And that number changes every year, so I don't know about this rolling...
Well, yeah.
Because, right, these numbers change radically.
So, we had to give him a three-year contract, or give the actual director a three-year contract, because we don't know what it'll be.
I would say even yearly, because you don't know what it's gonna be.
You could always do a two percent each year and then third year renegotiate.
Can adjust.
We're gonna do an adjustment. Well, you know what, you can write that into the language that you do an adjustment.
I haven't gone to, um, to a departmental labor, but I think the, the big thing too, when you have them as part-time exempt,
It didn't say exempt, it said part-time salaried, right?
If they're not getting paid what they should get paid when they work over forty hours, you must pay them overtime.
Yep.
What, what, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, so we just need to adjust that number. But what if we, what if we say in the contract, um, twenty-seven sixty-three, and then we say in the contract, um, we use the two percent for three years in the contract, but underneath each two percent is or, two percent or...
The FLS, a, a minimum.
The FLS. Yeah, minimum required.
That will give us all the numbers for the budget. So, you're saying at twenty-five, if he goes over a certain amount, he's actually eligible for benefits too, right?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. But if he's not a twenty-five hour salaried exempt employee?
No, no, it's...
Right, it, right.
No, no, I'm right.
If, if, if he's not.
If he's not a salaried exempt employee, he is, but he's not.
If he sticks with the, the twenty-five, he's not eligible for the benefits.
Right, but you're saying if he does more than twenty...
If he works more than forty, he's eligible for overtime, if he's making less than he should as a salaried employee.
But when, we're gonna adjust that, we're gonna adjust that. So, that's good to know for budgets, when they say, why are we doing this?
If he works one week, forty-one hours, you gotta pay him overtime. If he works a week thirty-five, okay, if he works a week twenty, you know, he's okay, it's, it's, it's...
But only if you're paying him less than what this number is.
So, are we both compassionately, the IT professional's good, and the town is covered? That's the discussion I wanted. Is the town covered? That's all I wanted.
Compass, yeah.
Perfect.
Yes. And I think the employee has, the employee just has to, just take it. And I say we go from five years to three years.
Oh, yeah, definitely three years.
Yeah, three years is just, it's just better for everybody.
Try to keep them consistent.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Any other discussion?
We'll reword that, so we'll reword that to exactly what we just said.
Okay, and I'll send you guys the language.
Thank you.
And work it from there.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Uh, town administrator report. He was like, I'm tired.
Quick version. Um, so, most of this I put down below, just so that you would have the actual documents. There's a, NHMA did a great summary of all the changes that legislatively were made per town meeting. Like, if there is a year, uh, it's a multi-level contract, you have to give this, the tax impact for every single year. Uh, and that's required now, you know, it used to be best practice, but now it's actually required. Um, and there's some others, so I, I put that document in there. Uh, NHMA also did one for zoning and planning changes, um, if you're interested in that one, we can get you that. Um, we have scheduled the audit wrap-up with, um, oh, no, the managing partner for September twenty-second. So, unfortunately, she wasn't available the eighth, but we'll work with the second. Um, we're looking at meals and rooms, so when we get our distribution, um, last year, the, it was a hundred and thirty, um, six million that was put, you know, the total distribution. This year, the legislature said, we're going to halt it at a hundred and thirty-seven million, the total allocation. So, whatever that is, uh, um, put out to the towns. And so, rather than, uh, um, letting it rise as it would have, and they estimate that's about eleven million dollar cut by capping it at, uh, but we will have that number as soon as we meet with the DRA to set the tax rate. Um, the other thing that I need to tell you, our utility, um, appraiser, Sansucci, is still gathering information because they're, we val- valuing all the utilities, and some utilities haven't gotten back to him with the necessary information. So, we asked for an extension of the MS one from September first to October first. And that's been granted. Highway block grant, um, we do know, because the treasury put this out, um, what we are going to get for, uh, twenty-six, um, and that's two-one-two-three-ninety-one-seventy-seven. That is split between two amounts, the regular road amount, and then, um, some that's a result of that Senate Bill three-sixty-seven, which was a result of the gas hike, um, so we do know that amount. Healthcare, uh, we're receiving rates from two separate companies, and we're gonna talk about them with department heads. I wanna be very careful, because when it comes to employees and their benefits, especially health insurance, it's a very personal conversation. And I think it's important for you to have that feedback from them. Solid waste disposal, I had actually sent an email with the fact that Dave, and Dave Mellon caught this, thank you very much to Dave. Um, this is a new charge, three hun- uh, three dollars and fifty cents a ton for bringing it to the state facilities. Um, what they have told us is somehow, some way, which they haven't figured out yet, they haven't figured out how this is exactly gonna work, we're gonna get that back. Yep.
You gotta write it.
That's what I did.
Write me a letter.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what you gotta do, but, so we're waiting, they said, you know, in mid-Septemberish, we'd know what the process is, it'd be. Um, and then...
You spelled here wrong.
I spelled what wrong?
Here.
Here? Here.
Should here in a couple of weeks.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So, we didn't put that in his budget though, did we?
No, we did not. And so, we think he, he thinks, and I should give Dave all the credit, he watches this stuff, like, um, he thinks that it might be a quarterly, like, type of report
Okay.
that he has to send them and then they reimburse us. My only concern with that is how it's gonna fall.
Okay.
Like, are they going to say, okay, from, you know, October to December, you submit in February? And you get the check in April, 'cause sometimes that's our best check source on the state? Um, so, I think we need to nail that down. And then I included a letter that I got on Friday from, eh, NHDES. Um, they've been reviewing the St. Gobain plan, um, for cleaning up that site. And the NHDES has really been putting it to, um, WSP, who's working on, on behalf of St. Gobain, and letting them know that they wanna see this, 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 and this, so they're taking it very seriously. And that's what the letter basically says, is that they would like to see even more remediation than what WSP has, um, put forth and what type of testing they would like to see, and, and, uh, so, they are really taking it very seriously. So, I put that letter in so that you could, you and, and the public could, um, see it.
Are we, as a town, expected to sign off on anything related to this?
No.
This is all said and done?
It's all, it's all under DES now.
Yeah.
Um, unfortunately, I, but the, the, I have to give DES credit, I mean, they have...
They've been good.
They have been good, they've been sending it back, no, this is not enough, and no, this is not enough, and, um, but, and we get notified every time they send St. Gobain a letter, or a notification, all of us, Bedford, Londonderry.
We have the opportunity to seek, I mean, remediation for what they've done to our town?
So, I think that that was, it's still an ongoing question. I think there are some federal legislators that are very interested, um, as well as some state, as in, what else can we get? Especially, 'cause there are some towns that didn't, weren't part of the dissent decree, right? They didn't get anything. But it's an ongoing conversation, and I would look to Selectman Queen and, and her PFAS committee. That would certainly be a good topic for them to take.
Mm-hmm. Bye. I'm awake.
Thank you. Now, we're going to Selectmen Reports, is that who we are?
Yeah.
Who we are. All right, Selectmen Reports, Slansky.
So, I did not have a, um, Conservation Commission meeting since we last met, it was done before that. Um, I did have a Heritage Commission meeting that was on Thursday, but I missed it. I had a family, um, a family event take place that I needed to go to. However, I did watch the meeting. There was a, a proposal or a, um, request brought in by the owner of Forty-four Talent Road to demolish that building. Um, they brought in a lot of pictures of what that building looked like inside, um, and the Heritage Commission handled it very well and, and, um, they're gonna be getting a report back from our building inspector, saying whether or not it's even able to be gone, gone into. So, that's where they are right now, and if it's not structurally, culturally, or historically significant, um, they won't need to do anything. Um, Sean Kraus came in and talked about Pass the Cornaway, um, uh, what do you call it, a, a road sign. He was very interesting, and that basically is what they did. And then, from what Marion told me, the meeting went well for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth, um, celebration. The fifteen people they had, they have not been able to move towards having, I guess they have a treasurer, but they don't have a, um, chairman or a vice chair yet. But what she told me is that they're gonna, they've gotten a slow start, but they're gonna finish strong and fast. So, I have a lot of, a lot of, uh, a lot of faith in, um, that committee, that they'll make that work. There's a lot of interest, it's very exciting. And then Conservation Commission, the big news was that the, um, DeRosa property has changed hands, and we now own that agricultural land, and it will be in agricultural perpetuity. Family Farms are, are leaving our, our state at the rate of every day, bye-bye. Um, and we are able to have a small area that we're able to protect, um, at this point being farmed by McQuestion and Alveron. Kim and I worked on those leases, and we were able to pretty much get McQuestion's done. And we're gonna be working with Alveron to talk to them about things that we need for that property, as well as, because at this point, their, their lease is zero. So, it's very exciting, I'd love to see them do a big party. Conservation Commission has a lot of, um, a lot of kudos to get to them. Jason Brennan did an amazing job getting all of those grants together and staying on top of every little idiosyncrasy that were needed by, by the state for their, their grants to go through. Um, it was a measure of love that he has for this town that he did. So, he should be recognized for that as well. And other than that, I didn't do anything exciting. What about you, Steve?
Thank you. Dr. Queenen.
Hey. Oh, here's my notes from your last meeting. Um, let's see. Capital Improvement Plan, we met on August eighteenth. We had the library come in with concerns about the roof and the water, uh, the property. And there are other items, uh, we also had conservation, um, that, uh, went pretty smooth as well. Uh, I'm not sure when we're meeting again, when do we meet? Beginning of next week? It's usually the first week, all right, in September.
So, uh, September.
Is it this one, Steve?
Oh, Economic Development.
No, this is Economic Development.
Oh.
Anyway, well, we usually meet the first week of, uh, September, so I'm assuming that. Economic Development Committee, we, uh, let's see, a meeting August twenty-seventh. We met last time, we handed off most of that to Jay, the zoning ordinances, we are handing off to Jay. We're just gonna vote on them ourselves as a committee, and just so we can bring it to the Board of Selectmen, what the committee wanted there. Uh, and we'll get our final report to you, probably within a week, or two, probably within a week. All right, NRPC, I already gave you the news on that. We do meet a full commission on September seventeenth, seven PM, at NRPC's headquarters, um, in Nashua, Temple Street in Nashua. The PFAS committee did not meet in August, so I didn't see that letter. Uh, we meet Friday, September twelfth. Uh, and that August meeting was not planned, it's their summer break, that's why we did not meet. So, we'll meet on Friday, September twelfth. Um, uh, so, we did have a non-public last time where we spoke about, um, what Larry just asked. At the federal level, they're trying to handle some of those questions for us, um, where we can go from here. And that's my, my recap.
Thank you. Very detailed as usual.
Nah, it was small.
Small for you, as, for the average person.
Yours are getting big.
Uh, Rec, uh, let's see, had an emergency meeting last week, because people were up in arms that we wanted to have DARA, um, softball fields used for softball only, so the school and some others were very upset that they, you know, thought that they didn't have notification that we were doing this, when we stated it in Mo- in March or April, when lacrosse was playing there, that we were dedicating this girls' softball, the only girls' softball complex, to girls' softball. Um, and we had the AD for the middle school there at that point, and somebody else, maybe the coach, and we said at that point, we were gonna use it for softball, but somehow they didn't get the memo. So, the people came out with pitchforks and torches, and, so they relented, and they decided to let them use it for this year, and then we're gonna address it for next year, next year. Um, so, um, the new gate's up at, at, uh, Talent Hall, um, it's a second gate inside the main gate, hopefully to keep cars off of the beach, but I don't know that it's gonna work and that people get through there. Um, they're working on, uh, covering that heating unit over there, that's the next big thing for them, that and getting the floors refinished. The heating unit needs to be covered, so it's, that stops malfunctioning in the winter, cause it's outside right now. And then Primex did the building inspection last week, uh, to, actually today, and we meet again tomorrow. Three weeks in a row for Rec.
Don't forget nine-two is the, uh, DARA pond.
Oh, yeah, the ribbon cutting, which has been pushed back and pushed back, and, if the sign comes in.
Ten and a, for nine-two, if the sign comes in.
Is that for the dock?
Yeah, for the dock, yeah, the dock is in.
That's very cool.
Yeah, dock's cool. Alright, for me, it's, uh, I really don't have much, unfortunately, with my crazy work schedule, I totally forgot about the planning board meeting last week, until I looked at my phone and it was running. Energy Commission, we met, but we didn't have a quorum, um, so we reschedule, and hopefully next time, we'll have a, a, a meeting. Intention is possibly do what we did here, where we'll set a, a, a strike price for the, uh, power rate. Um, and then also, I've got a lot of travel coming up for work, so I will not be at the next Board of Selectmen meeting, so I'm traveling three weeks out of four in September. So, I won't be here on nine-eight, but I will be on the others. Anything else? No. Entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So, maybe.
A second, or you just wanna sit here?
A second.
I'm leaving.
Can we do it?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four-zero-zero. Thank you.